The clock in the courtroom shows 2:00 PM. 2:00 PM, the Gillum County Court is holding a special session. Reason for this special session, today is Wednesday, August 15th, 2018, it is 2:00 PM. Special session by the Gillum County Court, as you know, it's a DeNovo public hearing on the following matter. Phillipi Canyon Quarry, it's a comprehensive plan map amendment, P-2018-01, comprehensive plan text amendment, T-2018-01, zoning map amendment, number Z-2018-01, site development This is the time duly set for the, as advertised, for a public hearing in the matter of the application submitted by Oregon Department of Transportation for post-acknowledgement plan amendment to gain further protection of an existing 32.7 acre aggregate site. To protect the Phillipi Canyon Quarry under Goal Five rules for aggregate sites, ODOT is requesting that Gillum County amend the Gillum County Comprehensive Plan and include the quarry in the Goal Five Comprehensive Plan map of inventory, map of inventory of aggregate and mineral resources, and amend the zoning map to add the site to the significant resource combining zone. In addition, ODOT is requesting site development plan approval to operate the Phillipi Canyon Quarry for an upcoming I-84 maintenance project. The Phillipi Canyon Quarry is located along Quinton Canyon Road, near Interstate 84, exit 123. Tax lot 100, northwest quarter, section six, T-2 North, R-19 East, WM, Gillum County, on the land-zoned exclusive fire mews in Gillum County. We are now opening the hearing. The county's court job is to conduct a public, is to conduct public hearings for the purpose of making land use decisions according to the ordinances and law of Gillum County and the state of Oregon. The court may not vary from the adopted laws and ordinances. If a law or ordinance is considered to be unfair or unworkable, there is a process to amend the ordinances. All county land use ordinances must meet minimum standards of the enabling state statutes and administrative rules. The application being heard today is being weighed against the law and ordinances in effect at the time the application was filed. Today's proceedings follow the requirements of Article 10, of Article 10. Amendments in the Gillum County zoning ordinance and the proposed amendments are considered a legislative amendment. As the proposed amendments impact several properties and changes, comprehensive plan text and map are proposed with this application. A public hearing is required by law and certain rules apply. Following the process detailed in Article 11, Administrative Provisions of the Gillum County Zoning Ordinance, the Planning Commission has held several public hearings on the matter and made a written recommendation to the county court. Now, following Section 11.110, the county court will hold a public hearing to review all Planning Commission recommendations, and this, and this hearing is being held in DeNovo. The court decision will be the final counting decision. All those in attendance that wish to testify are asked to sign the attendance sheet, and please include your mailing address. Failure to provide testimony at this hearing may preclude a person from participating on an appeal to the State Land Use Board of Appeals. All persons testifying must be recognized by the chair. State your name, address, and if you are representing someone else, please state who you are representing. The first order of business is to determine the qualifications of commissioners to act as decision makers on this matter. Question number one, does any member of the court have a potential or actual conflict of interest in this matter? No? Nope? Okay. Does any member of the court have ex parte pre-hearing contacts to declare?
I wanted to say, and I don't know because I was under the impression that staff was, it was okay to speak with staff, that wasn't considered ex parte.
It is, it is.
But just to be, you know, just to put everything out there, I did speak to our roadmaster, I wanted to know the location of the site, that was the second thing I did, I did go by the site, I needed to get directions. And, and I also asked about, you know, the condition of heritage lane and, and with the road, just little specific questions like that.
Okay. I also had an ex parte contact. One was an email with Brad Anderson that stated that he felt that there was plenty of quarry sites without this one. I also am road supervisor for the county, and so I'm quite involved with the road system in this, and also in the state with, so I've had lots of contact with the roadmaster and on this particular road, Quinton Road, and I've been out there to it, and, and so this would be the contact that I'd have, but it's with staff and, and it's through my normal course of work, long before this came to having a public hearing.
Okay. Toward the record, I'm Gillum County Judge Steve Schaefer. My prior employment, I delivered fuel to just about every nook and cranny within this county. I delivered to Bartolome's, I delivered to Phillipis, I'm very familiar with the property, so everybody is aware of the fact of that. I did receive a phone call from Lori Bartolome, I believe it was the day of the original public hearing that was scheduled. I notified Lori that we, I couldn't have a discussion with her on this, that it would be considered ex parte contact, and so that kind of ended the conversation there. I also received an email from Brian Meese yesterday, Brad Anderson this morning, and Mary Ann Cooper from the Farm Bureau this morning, Mr. Meese's and Mary Ann Cooper's, I deleted immediately, before I even looked at them. Mr. Anderson's, I did not, he is actually on our budget committee, and I had no idea what Brad might be, what would be involved with the email. I did read it, and Brad's was just exactly what Commissioner Wymer stated. So, I have, I feel that I can make a decision here, that it's, that ex parte is not going to influence me in what way to shape it. Agreed?
I feel the same.
Okay. Okay. Does any member of the court have any personal bias in this matter? No. No, I don't. Does anyone in the audience wish to challenge the qualifications of any member of the commission?
You almost reached me.
Okay. A copy of the rules of procedure for the hearing, the agenda, and copy of staff report are available on the table in the room. Rules for this public hearing include, the hearing is being recorded, all those in attendance are asked to sign the attendance sheet, and please, please include your mailing address. The hearing is being recorded, so for anyone offering testimony, please come to the front table and speak clearly, your name, address, into the microphone prior to commencing testimony. A five-minute time period will be allotted for each person. If you need more than five minutes, you must request it prior to testifying. Testimony may only address the applicable approval criteria. The applicable approval criteria, criteria were listed in the notice of the hearing and will be presented in the staff report. Please avoid repetitive and redundant testimony, and testimony which is not relevant or material to be issued. Please refrain from demonstrations in support of either side. Again, the proceedings are being recorded, so no clapping, cheering, cheering will be allowed. We ask that you be courteous and orderly in this hearing. Any party may request the record to be kept open for seven days following the hearing. Any party is entitled to request continuance if new information is submitted in support of the application. To be able to appeal an issue, you must state the issue clearly and with enough detail for the county court to consider the issue in making a decision. It's raise it or waive it. Failure of an application to raise constitutional or other issues relating to proposed conditions of approval with details specific enough to allow the county to respond to the issue precludes, precludes an action for damages and the circuit court. Testimony from all concerned shall be specific to the law that is understandable. All persons testifying must be recognized by the chairman. State your name and address, and if you are representing someone else, please state who you are representing. Prior to the conclusion of the public hearing, any participant may request an opportunity to present additional evidence, arguments, or testimony regarding the application. If such a request is made, the law states the county court must grant the request by either continuing the hearing to a time and date at least seven days from the date of the initial hearing, or the record must be kept open for a period of at least seven days. Failure to provide testimony at this hearing may preclude a person from participating on an appeal to the State Land Use Board of Appeals. To expedite the hearing, the county court members may ask questions of persons as they testify. These are the rules. Do we have any questions? The order of the testimony today will be, we'll receive a staff report from Nick Kramer, we'll receive presentation from the applicant, we'll hear from proponents, we'll hear from opponents, those who are neutral, anyone who wishes to offer testimony or ask questions, we'll have agency comments, the applicant will have a rebuttal, we will close the hearing, we'll deliberate, and then the planning, we, the county court will have a decision or motion. Any questions regarding the order of testimony? Okay, that, we shall move on to the staff report. Nick?
Great, thank you. Thank you. So, can you hit the button for me, go on there? I'm going to give a quick overview of the site and what the application is about, and my goal is to give you an overview of what it's about, what the criteria are, how we came to today, and give time for the applicant and the opponents to give their side. So, I, I don't want to spend a lot of time on findings, because they, they both have their view on findings and what they should be, and I want to make sure that you hear that. So, let's skip to the next slide. So, it sounds like you're all fairly familiar with the site, it's a 32-acre site, 15 miles west of Arlington, south of 84. Thank you. It's right off exit 123, and all this walk-up period, and I think the applicants will go through some of this detail, but you can see Quinton Canyon Road coming up through here. The proposal is to blast off portions of this cliff and push the rock over onto this side, which would be, so it's this, yes, this rock and push it down into here for processing. That's the overview, I have some more site plan that shows it, yeah, so that shows it a little, a little more clearly, I should have brought a pointer. So, you can see the processing area on the east side, there's no blasting to occur on that side. The primary access is Quinton Canyon Road, yes, and, and you can see the shelves there. So, next slide, please. This shows the dotted line, in the middle is the processing, is the quarry site area. The processing area is highlighted in green, excavation area to the left. The dotted line that says proposed SR zone overlay area is, represents a 1,500-foot impact area. So, the proposal would, this is something we need to decide on, is applying the significant resource overlay area to that whole impact area, or just the site. I, I recommend to apply it to the whole area, so future planners, when they're looking at any proposed uses in that area, would understand that there's certain requirements for any uses proposed in that area. There's lots of lines up here, so it's a little difficult to read. The EFU zone, it's surrounded by the EFU zone, and it's, the whole site is in the EFU zone. Okay, next slide, please. This is more detail that the applicant, I'm assuming, will go through in how it'll operate. Next slide. This one, I think, is, this one helps me understand what's happening. So, this is looking at a side profile of it, so the, those shelves will be blown, this top part will be blown off, this is the county road pushed over the edge, and over time, they would get down further and further, and eventually blow apart this whole cliff, and it would make a wider space for the county road. The, the proposal for use on this is for I-84 maintenance projects, and could be available for county road maintenance projects. ODOT expects to be in there every five to 10 years, more likely every 10 years. So, this is not a private pit, it wouldn't be offered up for private uses, only public uses. And with the amount of material in there, there's well over 80 to 100 years of material in there. And it's taken out in chunks at each active period every five to 10 years. Okay, so, that's just another, another close-up, let's skip to the next one. So, that's just an overview, I wanted to give you an overview of, of the project, the applicant can give you more details, opponents have issues with, with the details, but just to make sure we're all on the same page. So, this is section 815 out of Gillum County zoning ordinance, standards for mining operations. This is the purpose statement of this section. It is implementing the Goal Five of the state of Oregon. So, number one, the, the purpose is to identify and protect significant aggregate resources. So, this, this source is, I don't know why I forgot to silence him. Good reminder to silence your folks. What makes a site significant is whether it has over 500,000 tons. ODOT submitted a report to us that shows that this does have over 500,000 tons, that's in your packets. So, again, the, the purpose is to protect these sites, so this is a little different process than most of your land use where you're, you're protecting a use that, that has potential off-site impacts. So, you're, you know, usually you're limiting a use from having off-site impacts, but this one, you're protecting this significant source, and that it can be used into the future, and that other, other proposed uses for around it don't conflict with this use. Does that make sense? So, and that's number two, coordinate development and utilization of significant resources with other land uses to minimize conflicts. Number three, establish standards of development and operation for the significant aggregate resource extraction and process sites. So, there's proposed conditions of approval that do this, to explain when and how the site can be used, and what are your expectations for that? Number four, to prohibit the use of land in the significant resource overlay zone for uses incompatible with extraction and processing of aggregate. So, that says a lot more clearly than I just wrangled through. So, again, limit the types of uses that are around it to protect this use for an aggregate use. Five, provide for the agricultural use of land in the SR overlay prior to the development of extraction and processing activities. So, the agricultural uses still have to be accommodated in that area, you can't have such high impacts that they, you eliminate that agricultural use there. Six, to provide for the reclamation, rehabilitation, beneficial use of the aggregate resource in a manner compatible with surrounding land use pattern. So, this is all about the, what do you do with the site once it's all, all the aggregate resource has been used up? The, ODOT has a Dogami permit that has a reclamation plan in it, to return the site to grazing area, basically, and there's details on that in the Dogami permit that's part of your package. So, I wanted to go through that, that's, keep that in mind, that is the statement of purpose for why, why you have this, and why you have the ability to protect aggregate resources. Okay, next slide, please. So, land use process, this is a post-acknowledgement plan amendment. ODOT submits a complete application, the county notice was posted, the dates off the top of my head are January was when the, there was a complete application, notice was posted, we had our first Planning Commission meeting in May, and I have more detail about those later. So, there's public hearings, Planning Commission then makes a recommendation, and the county court holds it here in DeNovo, which is where we're at today. County court makes the final decision and adopts any decision via ordinance, and the decision's appealable to Lupo with the parties withstanding, and as read in the beginning, it has to be related to the criteria and clear enough for us to respond. Thank you. So, this is a list, this is from the comprehensive plan, pen X, C, this is a list of your aggregate resources. None of these aggregate resources are currently protected under the Goal Five process, so these have not been given significant site status. They're in there, they're, as the county issues conditional use permits, they've been putting them on this list. So, Phillipi would be the first aggregate site to have Goal Five protection on this list. It's ODOT's goal to have any of their sites that are eligible for significant site status to go through the Goal Five process and be protected and put on this list. Next slide, please. Here's a map of all of your aggregate resources in the county, the little red, it's hard to read on here, but on a PDF it's easier to read on your computer, but I'm putting this up there to show you that you have a lot of sites that are, again, none of these are Goal Five protected, but they are recognized aggregate sites throughout your county. Number 654 on the map to the right is the Phillipi Canyon site. You can see there's other sites in the vicinity. All right, thank you. And we already went through this one, the significant resource overlay zone to be added to the site in the 1,500-foot impact area. Okay, so, in the staff report, this just goes over the head, the header in the staff report. The county planning commission held two public hearings in May and June, and then the county planning commission met on July 2nd to deliberate on making a decision and recommendation. Close of deliberation, the planning commission recommended denial due to inadequate information provided by the applicant to make the determination. So, the planning commission, the statement was made, we feel this is a viable project, but we don't have enough information to prove that there are not significant impacts to the neighboring properties and agricultural uses. The planning commission did offer some suggested changes to the conditions if the county court chose to go ahead. So, you have all this in your packets. Next one, please. A county court public hearing is scheduled for July 18th, and was rescheduled to today after receiving a 35, a request for a 35-day extension from Oregon Department of Justice behalf of ODOT. Further testimony has been submitted by Department of Justice, the opponents have also submitted further testimony, and all that information is included with the record. As described in the supplemental staff report, there is a 180-day processing period laid out in that OAR for this type of application. We are running up against the 180-day time limit. The 35-day extension puts us to August 26th for that, for that time limit, to, to come to a decision and adopt findings. Reuben and I discussed this, it's our approach to keep processing this application as we would, and it's up to the applicant to act on that 180-day window. But we, we do have the opportunity, we still are within that period as we understand, and we do have opportunity to meet that deadline. Again, planning commission voted to recommend denial, applicants submitted further testimony. It's your job here to review the planning commission recommendation, review the additional testimony, take further testimony today, as this is a DeNovo hearing, and determine if the information submitted is sufficient to change the recommendation, or to go ahead and follow the recommendation for, for denial. Next one, please. Sorry, this is so small, I'm, I just, this is all in your staff report, but I just want to go over this, hit these high points. Okay, so, I really, there is reams and reams of paper here, and each side will, will submit detailed testimony today, but what I, as your contract planning staff, see as a major issue, is whether the proposed measures, so the conditions we've added, would minimize conflicts with agricultural practices. And you need to decide that the application can, can be approved if it does not force a significant change in accepted farm and forest practices on surrounding lands devoted to farm and forest use, and does not significantly increase the cost of accepted farm, the forest practices. So, the letter from DOJ makes the case that this has been met, the opponents make their case that there are significant impacts, and they're not adequately mitigated. So, as contracted staff for you, I'm not able to make that determination, it's up to you to hear the testimony and decide whether that criteria is met. I will write findings to support that decision, both the Department of Justice and the opponents have also offered to assist with writing findings depending on the decision. There's been statements about conflicts of interest with me being a contract planner and, under Tennyson, we went through that at the Planning Commission meeting, I do not have, I do not believe I have any conflict of interest, I have a contract with the county, Tennyson has been doing contract planning for the county for over 20 years between me and Dan Beeter. We don't have any contracts with ODOT to do any sort of work on this upcoming I-84 maintenance project, so I'm saying- project, so I'm saying that here to say, I am here as your, as contract staff to implement what you feel is the right decision and write the findings in a way that they can be defended. Okay, so I recommend the county court makes a tentative decision to approve or deny the application and then direct staff to prepare the final order and revise findings before the August 26th if possible. Is that possible? Yeah, it is. If we, if we can, if we feel you have the information you need tonight, or tonight, today, to get to a decision, and we, we can turn that around, we'd have to set another county court meeting for you to review those findings and accept them.
And it's also possible for the applicant to waive that and give us more time to, to give, for people to write more consideration.
Could you speak up, we can't hear you back here.
Oh, I, I said it was also possible for the applicant to give us more time, to allow us more time, so we're not stuck with that, that August 26th date.
Okay, I think that's my last slide. Okay, so I, we have an option here, I'd give you, I could go through all the criteria and what the proposed findings are, or we could go right to testimony, because the testimony is really specific to the criteria, and each side has their own take on this criteria. You've had quite a while with the staff report, so I'm assuming you're familiar with the criteria. So I would recommend that we go right in, in your testimony.
Okay.
And then you can ask questions of me about specific criteria after that testimony.
Are you comfortable with that, commissioners? Going right, right, yeah, okay. I, I think that's a good approach, I think it, it'll lead into questions, I think, I should.
I think so, otherwise we spend a long time, right, me going, droning through this, and they're going to hit at the points that are of contention.
Okay, good. So with that being said, I think we'll bring the applicant up for testimony.
Uh, is that all right for bringing up your name?
Oh, absolutely. All right.
Okay, name that address, no you.
So, all right, so I'll begin. Robert Townsend, I'm the ODOT area manager for Central Oregon and the Lower John Day area, which includes Gillon County.
I'm Russ Brosnan, the geology manager for Region Four, which is out of Bend, which covers all of Central Oregon.
Good morning, Judge Schaefer, commissioners. My name is Stacy Klosky, I'm with the Department of Justice, I'm sale, and I'm representing ODOT in this application.
Okay, thank you. All right. Michelle.
So let me first thank Judge Schaefer and the commissioners for allowing us opportunity to present this. I know it's a very, as Nick said, there's a lot of paper behind it, you know, it's been a complicated process for us over, you know, 15 years since I've been working to, to get this pit as an, an option for ODOT use. And so, what we're going to go over briefly today, a lot of our information is covered already, the additional supplemental letter from our DOJ includes a lot of it, but we wanted to cover a few of the high points, just to make it visually easier for you to see the main points. I want to stress that some of these things that we're going over, ODOT has a long partnership with Gillon County, currently with Dewey, you know, working on projects and just with the county as a whole, sharing resources and working on projects. So a lot of the things we're, we're going to talk about too are beyond the Goal Five requirements, so they'll be, we'll try to address as we go along which ones are specific to Goal Five and which ones are, we're addressing just to be, you know, good citizens and, and represent our agency and our constituents well. So next slide, please. So really why we're here, as Nick mentioned, is to get Phillipi quarry approved as a Goal Five site, so that we can use it on, on numerous ODOT projects or county projects, whatever we may use, and we have some consistency in the determination that it's available for us, you know, that's part of the reason for the Goal Five requirements, are to allow public agencies like us to be able to plan around projects and not have to apply for conditional uses every time. So that's the purpose of this one, and as Nick mentioned, we'll be proceeding with, you know, the remainder of ODOT sources on a timely manner. This one's just a little bit more critical to us because of the large value it has. So there's numerous reasons why we would provide a material source for contracts. When we say a maintenance contract, it's a little misleading. It is for freeway maintenance, but we're talking in the 12 to 15 million dollar maintenance project range, so quite significant. So the reason that we provide a material source, number one, is we allow a contractor to use it, it's public, it's in the benefit of the public, it serves the cheapest price, ODOT can control the permits and have those done ahead of time, it allows for a competitive market, so that any contractor bidding on our projects can bid work utilizing that quarry. So that's one of the main reasons that ODOT predominantly always offers material sources when we bid these large projects. In urban areas where there's a lot of commercial sites, you know, that's not as important, but in rural areas, it becomes equally important. A lot of discussion will be around the value of the aggregate, this seven and a half million, it's just a loose range, that's just, you know, basically the next phase, over 100 years, and the value of rock, you know, that, that goes up exponentially, but just so you can see on these next phases what the value of the rock is to us, and, and that value comes back as savings, you know, to the Oregon taxpayers. One of the things you hear a lot about is, well, we have a lot of sources in the area, and that's true, but that's not a decision that's warranted by the Goal Five requirements, but then it's not something we consider for ODOT because of numerous reasons. I want to get into this a little bit. Just because we offer a material source under a contract does not mean the contractor will use it. Lots of times, I'll bet 50% of the time, a contractor chooses not to use our pit, they'll use another private pit within the area. But the value that we get out of that is a competitive bidding process, and this, this particular project has one of the most unique situations is in that there's a very large quarry that's been used on past ODOT projects in Blaylock Canyon that's owned by a private third party. That may very well be used on this next project, but what controls the, the bidding and our project cost is that we're offering another source, so that any contractor can bid it, whereas that source or any private source can be tied up in a lease where only one private contractor can bid out of it. And so in essence, what you're, what we're seeing is whoever owns the lease to that quarry controls the price of the project. And, which is fine, we're more than happy with them using another material source as long as we get the competitive value for our constituents. So as long as we offer a competitive quarry adjacent to the project site, they may use another pit, they may use ours, but they'll have to bid it accordingly, knowing that, well, a contractor can bid out of ours, we're going to have to adjust our prices here. And so that's really the purpose of us, always supplying a quarry with these large projects. And if we, in this example, if we didn't have Phillipi quarry, the next one that we have available to test the material that suits freeway grade paving is out of Willipour quarry up at the Hever Junction. So now you can see if that's the only one we can offer. Now travel distance and haul cost, trucking really changed the cost of our work, and so that's why this pit is so important to freeway work, is it sits in the corridor of significant work. So I just want to give a little background, and we have some additional savings here, and it's hard to put a number on there, but depending on where the project is and the haul distance from one pit to the other, we see a 250 to 500,000 dollar savings every time we offer a pit on projects, and so that's significant beyond the value of the aggregate. So I just wanted to provide a little bit of background on why quarries are important to ODOT, and then why this quarry centered on the freeway, a short connection on an interchange that doesn't have a lot of other public use, is very valuable to ODOT. Next slide. So as we said, you know, as we offer projects in the area, generally a paving project that we, we construct on the freeway lasts about 15 years, that's our goal. So if we pave, you know, from Arlington to Quinton Canyon, we hope it lasts 15 years before we have to pave the next one. The reality is then there could be a Quinton Canyon project to root this, we could be paving from Arlington towards the Hever Junction and all offer Phillipi quarry. So that's where we change the timeframe to the five to 10-year average, just depending on, and this is maximum, right? As I said before, we could offer the quarry and no one could use it, and it'd be once every 10 or 15 years, just dependent, just depending on what the contractor chooses. And so during those projects, you know, we've outlined some timeframes there, but as you can see, and we'll talk about later on, the road closures, the impacts to the public are relatively short. I mean, we're talking these, you know, 45-day impacts, once every five to 10 years, right? The other times, as we're drilling, brading, and prepping, no impacts to the public, just work in the site, which, you know, right now, we can work in the site some too, right? So that's really not any different. For the next items, I'm going to turn it over to Russ, just as he, that's a little more knowledgeable on the specifics of those items, next slide.
So, a little bit different, I'm Russ Brosnan, like, geology lead for Bend, so I want to address some of the issues. One of the comments that Nick made was, is that we were going to get into the specifics. I don't think we really do in this presentation, get into the specifics of the proposed development. What we really focused on more were the comments that we got from the planning commission hearing, and the items that had been identified as, you know, kind of concerns. And so what the next, I don't know, how many slides, pretty much just addressed, you know, the issues that people had raised, or the concerns were raised, or the areas that were identified as maybe being somewhat deficient on, in information. So the first slide, what this shows, I mean, which is similar to the one that Nick had up there when he was giving the presentation, the green or kind of yellowish green is the ODOT quarry property, and then what the yellow circle or kind of semicircle around there is the, is the 1,500-foot impact around that site. So, and it shows, like you said, our site is tax law, a portion of tax law 100, and then the light kind of gray as it comes up to the quarry is, is the piece of Quinton Canyon Road south of the quarry. If you live real close, you can see the rest of it going through all the way down to the interchange. Next slide. So, based on all the testimony, based on all the, you know, written testimony that was submitted and so forth, you know, we kind of boiled it down, and, and these were the identified, identified areas of concern. So there was concerns related to noise, dust, or other discharge, there were potential conflicts with local roads, and then, you know, what it states there is, you know, that any, any issue with local roads has to be based on clear and objective standards, and that mining operation trucks must be treated the same as any other truck of the similar size weight capacities. So, I mean, that's, we had this issue before where, in some, some quarries around the state, where people complain about truck traffic, and they want to put speed limits up that, you know, restrict aggregate trucks from mining to a certain speed. They don't realize that the speed limits, once they go up, apply to everyone. So, I mean, that's kind of what that's saying there. Then one of the issues that was brought up was issues with other Goal Five significant resources, and Nick has addressed that in his staff report. And then it cannot, cannot conflict with agricultural practices and cannot conflict with ordinances that supersede Dogami requirements. So to address those just real quickly, we'll touch more on the noise and dust, we'll address the local roads here in a minute, and we'll address the agriculture, but for items number three and number five, there's nothing being proposed, and there's no Gillon County ordinances that supersede Dogami in this situation, so that's not an issue, and there are no other Goal Five significant resources identified by the county that are at issue in this case. So one of the issues that's been brought up repeatedly in written and oral testimony is noise. So what ODOT's done, and I think there's more description in the written testimony that's been submitted, but what ODOT did was created a noise model based off of recordings that we've taken at other quarries. So to kind of explain, if you see in the center of kind of the upper right-hand corner of the ODOT property, which is the yellow box here, you know, there's some different colored, like circles or kind of shape, polygon shapes. Anyway, that's what we propose, or where we're saying that the crusher is going to sit, the crushing equipment and so forth would sit. What we've done is we've taken noise measurements, we've had professional noise books go out and record noise at quarry sites before, multiple different sites, on crushers, we've got batch plant information, we've got, you know, and then they record how much noise a loader makes, how much noise a dozer takes, you know, or makes, and so forth. And so what this is showing is, is, you know, and I think we, in the written testimony, we show what equipment's running at the site, you know, and so it's a multitude of, you know, to generate the noise levels, and then what this model has done is, is it predicts what the decibel levels are going to be outside, or, you know, at the ODOT property and then outside of the property, based on that equipment running all at the same time. I think we have zoom in, don't we?
That's what I was just trying to figure out. This is, excuse me, Stacy Klosky, for the record, this is attached to our August, that last slide, that was attached to our August 1st materials, and I do think that we could probably blow it out, but I think there's also some future slides that might help, because I know it's really hard to read what those numbers are.
Okay, so this is just kind of a blow up of the area that's to the south of the quarry, so you can still see the colored rings, you know, up into the top left where the highest levels of noise are going to be, where the crusher is, where the dozers are, and so forth. And it shows, based on the noise model, I mean, when you get down there to where, kind of where you can see the leader arrow coming in, which is actually pointed toward the only identified spring that's out there on the USGS map, it shows that the noise level there is 55 D, you know, decibels. And the original map, I think, that was submitted in some of the earlier testimony, had a little bit different, it was like, and it was based on color shadings, and it showed, like, the levels were based on like DML, which is the daily noise level, I think is what it is. So what, we changed this to decibels, so if you go back to this slide, the reason we switched it and showed contours with the decibel levels is to show, these are the DEQ, the tables on the left are the DEQ tables, that show what the allowable noise levels are, you know, based on either existing or new industrial uses. And so what it shows, like, you know, is, you know, maximum is, is, or it shows 55 is like the lowest regime, and then 50 over there at the 10 PM to 7 AM, like, if you're looking at the bottom chart. So if you go back to that chart, you know, and this is for noise sensitive uses, if you go back to the drawing, you can see the only noise sensitive use that, you know, is the residence that's, you know, sitting down there, kind of middle, middle right of the slide, and by the time you, you know, our noise levels show 55 D decibels, and then it just continues to drop as you move away. So we're well within the Q noise limits. So one of the other issues that had been brought up by the opponents was the potential for, you know, noise impacting cattle, and, hold on, there's not a lot of research out there on that, not a lot of information, but there were a few things that, you know, I can't remember specifically where, I mean, but I think they were from the Netherlands, I think.
I'm not going to remember the country where they're coming, and there was some more research on it.
Oh.
I can't hear you.
Sorry. Can you hear me now?
Yeah, yeah.
I can hear myself better, too. So the argument that was made by Mr. Mesa and Mr. Phillipi is that noise from the quarry was going to conflict or, or impact the calving operations that would happen during the winter. And I think that they had testified that that was going to create certain stresses that would cause all sorts of problems with lactation, the potential of boarding, I think, with cattle running away. So we tried to find any research that we could, that discussed that very scenario, and what we found is we couldn't, not with respect to calving operations, but the research that's out there talks more about the impact, I think, on dairy cows versus, not grazing, but, or ranching cows. And that may not be making much sense, if it's not clear to you that I'm not a rancher, it shouldn't be. But what the research did find is for noise generally causing stress in cattle, that it really had to be over an 85-decibel range, that anything below that really didn't seem to cause any sort of significant behavioral response to the cattle that were tested. And in most cases, really what they would do is just walk away. And so I believe what Mr., was either Mr. Phillipi or Mr. Mesa testified, is that the calves in the winter is that the calves in the winter time, which is one, I think we're talking about a late fall, early spring timeframe for blasting, that they tended to winter right around the water area, wherever there was a spring located on that area. The only mapped spring in this area is right where you see that little black arrow pointing at that fifty-five. So I'm going to make an assumption that that's primarily where the cattle are grazing for the winter or the cattle for the winter. So the point of this is that we did attempt to do some research. We definitely uncovered research about the impact by noise of cattle generally in different circumstances. The most we could come up with is that under eighty-five didn't seem to cause a problem. And if the cattle are calving, they're in an area where there's a spring, then they're in an area where the noise levels reach at the highest fifty-five, maybe sixty decibels. So what this goes to, there was that earlier slide that talked about the conflicts that the commission and the court needs to consider and decide whether there are conflicts, whether identifying this as a gold-fired resource. This goes to whether, it's two issues, whether there's a conflict in noise. Does the mining operation cause a conflict because of the noise it might generate? And specifically here with the cows, I don't think, I think the answer's no. I think that the cows are far enough away, at least during this time period when the blasting will occur and later on when the actual, when the processing happens, that it's not going to impact them. So that's what this is about, the noise to the cattle, the noise to the cows. And we haven't identified any other, any other uses in this area that could potentially be impacted by noise. So hopefully these two slides address that, these two slides.
So, again, I think the opponents in testimony, both written and oral, you know, addressed the issue of concerns over water. I think in some of the testimony that were, you know, brought up the issue of spring and on the last slide, we showed the location, the only mapped spring that's out there, which is quite ways to the south of the ODOT property. There was also some mention, I think in written testimony, about a well. In the research, you know, the only thing I can figure is the only well that could be out there would be the one up near the residence, which is over like three thousand or more feet away from, you know, the actual quarry property. But like we mentioned, water will not be used for processing. There'll be water that will be used for dust suppression, you know, as well as for, you know, on the crusher and then also on, you know, the haul roads and so forth where it's gravel. But otherwise, won't be any water used for processing. We don't have a well on our property. And then the other issue that came up regarding water was concerns over Wildcat Creek, which runs along the, you know, down through the eastern side of the ODOT source. And Doug Ami permit already requires, you know, like it states that they require a sixty-foot setback. And Doug Ami, which is Department of Geology and Mineral Industry, also addresses, you know, water quality through the NPDS program. So if there is, you know, an event of some sort that causes water runoff, you know, we'll adjust and address it through the NPDS permitting process. And then the other thing is the way our pit plans are shown, the quarry floor is sloped so that in the future, you know, as it's being developed and one is not being worked, water runs toward the face, not off toward the creek. So, we think that addresses the issue and the concern that were raised on the water. So, back again a little bit on the, on the issues of the cows and so forth, I mean, and just to address it, this is a map, I mean, man, that's tough to read, but if you could zoom in, I'll just tell you up there on the top, there's a little, the red and the green. So this is a map of the various material sources around the state that are ODOT controlled and permitted and so forth. And in all of those sites, in all of the sites that we have permitted, we've never had an issue raised with cattle. Has a conflict, mining with a conflict with cattle. Zero. So another issue is dust. I mean, that was raised. And like we said, dust is addressed, you know, through DEQ as well. The only sensitive use, you know, which is identified in their regulations, which would be a home or occupied buildings, is, I think, is the Mesa residence, which is well over three thousand feet away from the edge of the property line. And is probably another three or four hundred feet from the edge of our property line into the center of the site where the quarry or the actual crushing and, you know, equipment would be situated. There's no measurable conflicts with agriculture that are identified with dust unless you're dealing with vineyards or something of that nature. Portable rock crushers, as well as concrete and asphalt plants, all require, they must be permitted by DEQ. They all have to hold air quality discharge permits, which shows that they can meet the air quality standards. So every operator that would be moving into the site with, you know, with either a crusher or a batch plant would have those permits in hand. And then on top of it, you know, our contract requirements require that the contractors, you know, do erosion control and pollution control plans and also address dust, like I said, either through watering or sometimes they use mag chloride and things of that nature to keep the dust down on the roads and also on the, you know, on the equipment. So, the next issue was regarding, that was raised, or one of the next issues, I guess, was regarding traffic. And like, I think on one of the second slide that Bob talked about, you know, we gave you kind of like a timeline on when, you know, how the source would operate, how many days, weeks it'd be, you know, for drilling and site prep and so forth. So what this shows is, you know, what we're discussing is the potential for like a three-week closure, continuous closure, you know, every five to ten years or as he mentioned, if it's not used on a particular project, it could even be longer. And what that's for is to drop the rock from, you know, Nick had the slide that he showed before, which was a development plan, the rock sections that we had provided. So, you know, if we drill and shoot and drop it down, the road, Phillipi Road's not wide enough to have storage on one side, you know, so traffic can still go. So if we close the roof, we can close the road, we can drop the rock, we can push it across, remove it across. And I think like you said, we have a twenty-day, twenty-one day, we're asking for, a twenty-one day maximum closure of the road for that, you know, activity to take place. As part of what we've already talked about in the, with the planning commission, and I think it's in the staff report, we've agreed that before there'd be any twenty-one day closure, there'd be a forty-five day notice. That notice would go out to all the local folks, you know, that live up in there, but also go to, we talked about the post office, to the, you know, emergency services, fire department, all those folks. So everybody would know that, you know, as of a certain date, that road can be closed from that point for the next twenty-one days. What we've asked for is to include as a condition, you know, a limitation of, you know, that that twenty-one day period would be allowed to occur sometime between November and March. And what that allow would allow, so that's three weeks, somewhere's in that timeframe. And whenever that would be identified, there'd be the forty-five day notice would be given upfront. But that gives us time for, you know, on a contract like the one that Bob mentioned, interstate maintenance, for the contractor to schedule the work, get in there, you know, plan it, get the rock off and then get in the pit. And, I mean, by giving them that window, we're hoping to avoid any kind of major, or not major, but any kind of like conflict with, you know, anybody's use, you know, use of the road for pain or whatever it is. It definitely falls outside of, you know, the harvest season and stuff. One of the things that came up was, you know, impacts to traffic. We actually looked back and were able to find our traffic folks, for whatever reason, had actually done traffic counts on Quinton Canyon Road. Not recently, I think they were two thousand and fourteen? And, can't remember the specific date. But we had two different counts. One was for a forty-eight hour period in the spring, done in April, and one was, was done in like July or something, June or July or something. And what this shows is just a summary that over a twenty-four hour period, you know, there was nineteen trips a day in the springtime and there were seventy, sixty-seven trips per day in the summer. So, I mean, when looking at, you know, our, our timeframe or our request for, you know, road closure, twenty-one day road closure of November to March, would put us into more into the nineteen, you know, trips per day kind of area. And like I said, emergency folks would be notified as part of the forty-five day notice and they'd have access via the detour. And I think we have some more information in a minute on the detour. I guess we'll get to the detour in a minute. So right there, it's talking about delays during repairs. You know, like I said, once the road is reopened, the road would be made safe and passable. This is another question that came up, I think, to the, at the planning commission hearing. There was some confusion on what exactly ODOT was proposing or talking about. So once, you know, when the rock's on the road and is cleaned off, the road's probably going to have some divots and some damage and so forth. So what we're talking about and trying to be clear on is, is the plan would be, once before the road's reopened for traffic, you know, the potholes would be patched and be, you know, smoothed and made safe. But that, those would be basically temporary repairs through that stretch because the permanent repairs would be, would wait until the crushing's completed and the bathing plant was set up in the inside the quarry, you know, and then they could just bring up, you know, whatever was needed to take care of to do the final repairs. So there'd be kind of an interim period between when the rock's on the road and cleaned off and when it would actually be completely resurfaced again, would be depending upon the timing of when the rocks drilled and shot versus when the asphalt plant is set up and producing mix.
I'll mention here too, in our condition, we, the planning commission really worked on this condition a lot, to detail that the county roadmaster meets beforehand and assesses the condition, meets before the road's reopened to ensure that it's safe. And then meets, again, at the final repair to ensure that it's back to the state it was prior to the project. So that's all laid out in condition twelve.
Is it time for repairs to take place?
No.
And just to, ODOT completely agrees with that condition. That's standard protocol in all our contracts when we're on a Gany County road, city road, is to perform the same maintenance, bring them up to a safe and acceptable standard during construction. And then at the end of the construction, to meet with the entity and make sure that they meet or exceed the existing condition. And in this case, since the road is basically an oil mat and we'll have an asphalt plant there capable of putting three-way grade asphalt, I think it's an easy, easy fix to see that it'll be in better shape when we're done than it is now.
Okay. Let's, let's talk about timeframe. Let's say we do it in November, March. I don't think I remember ever seeing a ODOT paving project that went on in April, May, June usually is about the first time that we start paving this area like we're at Robert.
Yeah, it just depends. I mean, this one will actually start in April. Everyone's differing. But, and what Russ is mentioning about the final paving, as we're, you know, when the road's damaged after we, you know, shoot and blast rocks, it'll be repaired before we open it up to traffic, repaired, just like a county, you know, patches, potholes and things like that. We'll do that immediately before it's open. It just won't have the final look until obviously we're all done because we don't want to do it several times.
Yeah, when the paving project comes.
Correct.
Okay. So, the blasting gets done, we move all the rock, we begin the crushing process, the road will be brought back to the level that it was prior to the blasting. Then once the paving begins, the new pavement would be put in. Is that, is that what you're saying?
That, that's correct. And the, the timing of that is obviously, we want to be all done in the area before we put the final paving. And, you know, it'll be a determination with Dewey or whoever the roadmaster is when we use the pit, that we may not pave the whole thing. It may be only two hundred feet requires new paving, you know, that'll be the judgment call that we work with, which we need to see.
Okay, okay. I just want to make sure that we don't have a road that's, that's, you know, in terrible shape for two months until...
No, that's correct.
And it's not going to give a pave.
No, definitely not. It's a two-faced approach. And just to be honest, in the background, at some point along our development, the road won't even be in the same location, right? We'll, as we take off cliffs, we'll be moving it slightly to help our operations since it's a county road within our ODOT property.
And so then, some other, I mean, I guess another point of confusion, and I'm not sure exactly how it came about, but that after the twenty-one day closure, there was some concerns and some confusion that we were going to have, you know, delayed traffic, you know, repeatedly throughout the summer and stuff, you know, as the paving operation and stuff went on. And I don't think that's the case. I mean, and like I said, I'm not sure where that idea, you know, came from. But, you know, basically like what it states right there, I mean, there may be some minor delays as they move equipment, you know, big equipment up that road. I mean, that may be too wide, so they may have to stop traffic as it gets in, you know, into the access, the quarry access road and so forth. But otherwise, there shouldn't be any additional delays. I mean, and so, like, five minutes, ten minutes, whatever it might be, to move equipment in, there's no, there should be no need to restrict traffic from quarry hauling. We've taken a look at that. I mean, I don't know if you guys have mentioned, all mentioned that it's been out there. So when the access road comes in, there's good sight distance up the hill and down the hill. There should be no reason that trucks can't come in and out of the quarry and go down and as well as, you know, local traffic at the same time. And emergency vehicle, that's another one of the questions that's been raised. Emergency vehicle, you know, will have access up and down that road, with the exception that twenty-one day period when it's closed, or, you know, they'd have access up and down that road at all times. So impacts on agricultural practices?
Yeah, I'll just, so if the slides seem somewhat out of order, it's because I was, as we were all talking about, and we're trying to arrange them in a way that matches your code. And, once you talk about your, your noise and your dust and your other discharges, we thought that was a significant issue that came up in front of the planning commission that they felt they needed more information. The next issue was the, the traffic impacts. And then the next big one was whether this was going to impact, and I might be getting the word cut off, but the impact of the agricultural, will it be going to conflict with the agricultural practices or uses in the EF use around the area? So what this is, and this is where I come in, is here's your legal standard, here's your legal jargon about this. So when you're trying to decide in the context of whether you should identify, whether you can identify an aggregate mine as a gold-fired resource or not, when you have to decide whether or not this resource is going to, identifying this as a resource is going to force a significant change in the agricultural practices or force a significant cost. And so the courts, both Lubbock and the Court of Appeals, haven't, they haven't fully fleshed this out. There's one case that's going up to the Supreme Court about it, and that's more about what the cost is. And I think what at least, the state's position on what that means in changing a significant change, I'm sorry, making, forcing a significant change in the agricultural practices is, are you going to do something to really make the big blocks of land not appropriate for use in a farming community? Is something about this mining going to not stop the agricultural practices, but is it going to minimize it so much that it really no longer becomes useful as an agricultural tract of land? So it's, would mining force a significant change or increase the cost? Significant means is, is a forced change going to diminish or displace those agricultural practices? Here in the cattle grazing and calving and I ask if we have meat operations. And even if you find that that may happen, the question is, are there conditions that can be added that are going to ensure that these farming practices aren't significantly changed? It's all about conflicts. Are there conflicts? Are they, are they significant? And if they're there, is there something we can do to minimize it? So here, I think probably one of the biggest conflicts that everybody's talked about over and over again is this twenty-one day closure of the road and what kind of impact that's going to have. So if we can go to the next slide, is it going to impact it? Is it going to be a conflict of what goes on? Sure. But is there a way to minimize it? And the answer is yes, because there is a very viable detour, that Heritage Lane detour, which these guys are much more adept at talking about it than I am. But I think it's something that we really need for everybody to understand that there is, it's not, there is an accepted practice that will minimize whatever conflict is caused by that closure.
Before we talk about this specific detour, I just want to put it in context for ODOT, right? We, we take detours and impacts to the traveling public as significant, I mean, that's our, our number one goal, right? When we're doing all these construction projects is how we minimize it. Most of you were around when we did the deck at Biggs Bridge, right? And those are month-long, two-month-long closures on Highway ninety-seven. We're going to be redoing the deck on the, the bridge over the Columbia and the Dalles, other several month-long closures at a time, right? And so, we weigh the pluses and minuses of those all the time in all of these elements. And so, as you look for significance here, right? And we're talking about a twenty-one day closure. Part of managing the significant issue as well is the timeframe, which we, you know, it would be a lot easier for us to allow the twenty-one days at any time, right? It would provide us with the cheapest cost for our work. His English contractor doesn't need to plan around this timeframe. But one of the, one of the sacrifices and just to make it more feasible for the local agricultural property owners is to limit that to the November to March timeframe. Likewise, this detour, right, is completely manageable, you know, based on those ATTs of nineteen to sixty-seven when we're... of 19 to 67, when we're talking about 12,000 ATTs and, you know, on the freeways all the time and having detours. So I just wanted to put it in a little perspective before we actually spoke about Heritage Lane.
Oh, I'm talking about Heritage?
Yeah, sure.
Oh, okay. So basically, I mean, like we talked about the Heritage Lane or the detour route and so forth came up, there was testimony by the opponents that it was unsafe, that it was soft, it wasn't wide enough and so on and so forth. So we did our own looking, and then we also talked to the county roadmaster, you know, and got information. And so the information is kind of summarized here, you know, basically the susceptible washouts response was that that happened once in like 2006, went during floods. I think that pretty much took out all kinds of roads all over the place. But, I mean, in this case, you know, he, he indicated that the county went out there and repaired that section of road by armoring the bank and repairing the base rock and that they haven't had a washout or any problems since. We also looked at the width of the road, you know, along Heritage Lane, the detour and the width versus the, you know, coming down the pavement, and actually the gravel road is wider than the, the paved section of road, you know, and so, and relatively straight, you know, it's got, it shows that there's one narrow spot that it's 16, it's at 16 feet, six inches, which is consistent with the information that ODOT had gotten as well. But it does add a little bit of time. I mean, again, it's adds, we, I think we provided the testimony earlier and to the planning commission, if you were going, if you were starting at Heritage Lane and Quentin Canyon Road, if you were to drive down to the freeway down to Quentin and then turn toward Arlington, by taking the detour, it added approximately eight minutes to go eastbound. But if you were going to drive down Quentin and then go toward the Dals or back, you know, to the west, the detour added about 21 minutes. So those, we talked about, those would be timeframes that would be impacting the folks, you know, that were using that route. I'm assuming they were all starting at the same point, you know, for that period of time when the road would be closed, but 21 days out of every potentially seven, five to, five to 10 years. Oh, wild, I forgot that one. So that was another issue that came up. I think we also, yeah. Anyhow, wildfire is a concern, you know, most definitely, and after this last, recent, last couple of months, obviously we've seen some pretty significant wildfires, you know, over in Wasco and Sherman and some of the other areas around. So definitely a concern, but not really a criteria that plays in on how, whether or not this is a, a gold five site. But to address that, you know, like we talked about, the road closure was November, I mean, we suggested was November through March, which is the lowest point, the lowest risk for fire season. We also noticed, you made the comment that we're going to provide a 45-day notice for that road closure, you know, to the emergency services, like I said, fire department, police and all the other folks, so that they know that that's out there. And then while operating, you know, in the quarry as well as on, you know, the requirement that ODOT has through our contract specifications is that contractors have firefighting equipment commensurate with the fire risk at the time on site, so meaning water trucks and, and equipment. And then I tried to do some research to see, but I, maybe they're not real good or what, but I can't find a single case in my Googling and searching where a quarry site's ever started a wildfire. I'm sure it's probably happened someplace, but if you really think about it, it's probably one of the safest places because the equipment's sitting on bare rock. So anyhow, so we wanted to address the concern, the wildfire concern. I think we didn't address, we were going to have a slide regarding noxious weeds. I think that's another issue that came up, and I just wanted to point out, and we talked about, and I think we had in the testimony before, by our ODOT specifications, when any equipment comes onto a project, it has to be cleaned in advance, so, you know, dirt and weeds and stuff that might be on the equipment are removed prior to coming onto the site. And then we also have, what I think is in testimony from our July letter, he talks about how ODOT does vegetation management. So we have biologists that review these sites every so many years, looks at them to determine, you know, if there's any kind of noxious or invasive weeds, and we have a statewide, you know, spray program. So if anything is identified, you know, say post-mining, I mean, you know, years, a couple years or so down, or in between times, we have a spray program that comes out and takes care of that, and we address those weeds. Well, that's it.
The county does too, and we've worked with ODOT, roads, quarries and everything.
And to say, I'm not sure in a lot of counties, I think ODOT contracts with a county sprayer to do the weed management. Can I, is that the, you know?
That might be the case here in Gillon County, I'm not sure. I'm also the weed supervisor.
So I know, we, we contract with you.
So I think that's the end of the slides, but there were just a couple of things I wanted to add on that didn't get addressed. And the first thing that, I believe that the court had talked about was the timing and why there seems to be kind of a, I was going to say fire, it's probably a bad analogy under ODOT to get this going, but the sole reason why is because of the pending project that'll happen on I-84. So with the procurement process, there's a specific, as you do your procurement projects, there's a specific amount of time that you have to have to get notice, make the selection, identify the better, and going as fast as they possible, as possibly can, or as slow as they possibly can. For ODOT to get this done, but still be able to do that road closure at a time that's going to least impact the neighbors, we would need to get a decision as soon as possible. And what I've, I've had in there is unfortunately not just your decision, but we, we anticipate they'll be able to, you know, and if there is, trying to figure out all the time that would be, be put into that. So I know this is a, it's a complex issue, it's the first time the county will have identified a resource and it's an important issue. And ODOT wants to be able to give the county as much time as necessary to be able to make, to make a decision, but that's the problem is that once this project goes, I don't know if an I-84 project is going to pop up, it's going to make this a viable source. So yes, ODOT could absolutely weigh the time constraints and we can try and work with some days, but that's really what, that's what that, that's that deadline or whatever it is, it's sticking out there. And the only other thing I'd like to do is echo what Mick had said early on about the impact area, about what it is that you identify as the significant resource zone and whether it should just be that little square where ODOT's trying to mine, or should it be the entire impact area? I absolutely echo staff's comments about it should be, if you identify that overlay, it should also be over the impact zone, and that way when you have future development, if you see a few properties, there could be potential other uses on there, whoever it is that tries to go in and develop will know immediately that this is an aggregate site and there may be, that there's an aggregate site there. That may generate dust or noise or whatever it is. It really, it helps protect the significant resource, but it also helps protect future people coming to develop.
Good. Thank you, Stacey. Anything further? Nope. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, did not see a sign. We're looking for proponents right now. Who wants to?
Those three.
Those three, that was it. Okay. Ross Frost?
That's me.
Yep. So, yep. Okay, now we have opponents of this. I'm going to go ahead and read off the list of the people who wanted to testify as an opponent. I'm not sure which one of you wants to go first. Okay, so we've got Lori Arpa May, Connie Anderson, David Anderson, Brian Meese and Blake Philippi. So who wants to go first? Okay. Okay, Mr. Brian Meese.
Mr. Meese, you submitted additional testimony, and now would be the time to enter that in the record. By, from your attorney.
We, I want to make sure with Sandy, we've had emails back and forth, not only was Brad Anderson's letter, we have another letter from our boys expert, we have a letter from Oregon Farm Bureau, we have Wendy's letter, we have my letter, and we have Blake Philippi's letter, and they've all been entered into the record over the last 24 hours as we've had time to.
So just to clarify, they're being entered into the record right now?
Okay.
That was part of the email, I believe is what Sandy is saying, those came into us at what? Three thirty? So, so starting yesterday afternoon all the way through this morning.
Let me put the records, I'm Brian Meese, I'm the trustee for the Meese Family Trust. We own the ranch at Clayton Canyon Road, with our house 3,000 feet away from the mighty bit.
So, there appears to be an awful lot of information here. I'm kind of of the opinion that maybe we have Mr. Meese go over these, summarize each one of them, specifically the new information. Would that be all rise?
Yes, let's, let's do that. I do have a PowerPoint, and Sandy has that.
They're going to touch base on.
It's going to touch base, it's going to touch base on all the relevant issues, and we'll have quotes from our boys guy. We will have quotes from OFD.
Okay. Okay. So as you go through these, Mr. Meese, you could touch base, that, that is something that's in your testament or your, your letter in the record? If it's something that's with Mr. Philippi's, that we know that that information is within maybe Mr. Philippi's letter?
Okay. We'll do our best to separate it as been said.
There's a lot of information.
We have a lot of information. We only had, we only had 10 days to respond after we got the staff report. I know that's input, so we have another amount of time to have our experts, you know, respond. So thank you to the court, your honor, commissioners. We appreciate your time today, allowing us to present our side of the picture. Our objective here today is to hopefully convince you, number one, to deny this application, but also that this should have been, we should have a global discussion about gold five resources in Gillon County rather than having this one specific thing dealt with out of context with the other gold five resources, wildlife, landscape management, gravity impacts, all the other farming practices, all the other things that would play into this. We kind of feel left out because the discussion started without us, and although that's just the way things are, they don't have to notify us. We've been through this in 2002, we've been through this, this in 2009, and we prevailed more or less all those times. In 2002, it was basically done. In 2009, they came back and conditional use permit 2008 dash 08 was approved, and since that time, ODOT has decided that's not adequate. Not only that, but they have a link of specific issues within that conditional use permit regarding periodic review, and I'll show you some other things. I'm going to go through the slides here. I'm going to leave all of our records, PowerPoint on the, on the thumb drive, it is going to stay with you, it is part of the record, and let's go to the next slide. So this is the slide of key language, Lori Arpa May's testimony. This is our house here. I want you to note how, how significant these cliffs are. These are the most iconic cliffs pretty much in Gillon County. These were all formed by the Missoula floods. The gravel wire here was from the water coming down here, seven feet, you know, 400 feet above where you see the rims. That's John Day in the background. This flowed over the top, all the way to the John Day River. It's documented in Cataclysm's on the Columbia, which is the first book that, you know, described this. It is also a subject of an OBD special on the Missoula floods, which we have entered both of those documents into the records during the finding commission hearings. Essentially, this whole bench here becomes unusable for grazing as they start to take this off. ODOT has condemned and taken access from us over the last few months so that they now, the impact point should be at least up this far to center anything because we have trucks coming and going at this point as well as down here. You have equipment coming out on this bench. So one other thing that hasn't been brought up right here, Basin, Wildcrack, Wildcat Creek, there's a 9,000-year-old indigenous inhabitation there that was archaeologically mined in the late 50s, early 60s by the University of Oregon before they flooded this. So there is a resource here, there are other resources here, there's old wagon roads down here, which Dewey, as we're going through this, Dewey would much rather have our road on that side of the canyon. But just, this is such a unique site, and the basalt cliffs are probably the most iconic in the entire north end of the county. So this, I want to show you the uniqueness, so this is where the, the mining operation is here. Our house is right here. What you need to realize is this is all peninsula. We have, this is Bladock Canyon. If this is shut down, there is no way out of all this except Bladock. If you get a fire here and this is shut down in the winter, if you get this blocked off where traffic is having trouble getting up or down it, too many weak trucks coming up or down, along with 300 to 400 trucks coming out of the pit a day, which is what has been put on the record by ODOT, we, we are basically isolated. There's no way out to the south, Bladock Road dead ends above McDonald Ferry, there's no way out. This is all locked. And all this side from the narrows down is accessible by the public. We have a fire hazard all summer down here. We have, because of the railroad and traffic, we have fire hazard all along the north side. So we're basically surrounded by fire, you know, and we've, you know, we've got pictures of the fire burning up the canyon, it happens regularly. Okay, Sandy? So one of our wild minutes is when you're, it was recommended that you ignore the statements in your own county code regarding the basalt outcroppings. Some of your predecessors had the foresight that these cliffs and these basalt outcroppings are in fact, you know, significant resources. It's right there in your, in your GC language, and you're basically being told to ignore those. This is just another view, this is the cliff that's being taken off. The access road comes through here, so this whole area basically, rather than being a calving area and pasture, is being taken away from us. And that has been, they have, we have been, oh, they haven't found me to serve me, but there, there's some ones on the way. Blake, Blake Philippi has already been summoned, they're taking, regardless of what we do, without a process, they're taking our land. So with that, in your language, there is no real reason to blow this up. Gravel really should not trump, you know, the, the issues that you already have dealt with in your gold five language in Gillon County ordinances. Next. Okay, and this is, I'm going to fly over this because Blake is more in tune with all the impacts on the ranching. Blake essentially runs both of our operations. He takes care of our cattle coming in and out and interacting with the farmers that bring their cattle in. So the point here is that the Farm Bureau agrees that there are impacts, there is stress, and those are, you know, people that are involved, the farmers all over the state, and the letter from OFD basically supports our position in that the farming practices need to trump this quarry. Next. More from OFD. Again, it's, it's in the OFD letter, it's in total opposition to the ODOT quarry and Philippi Canyon. The main issue here is that the impacts on us getting our product in and out of there cannot be mitigated. Blake will go through some of the dollar amounts, the dollar amounts and the expenses that range anywhere from. five, $10,000 to $50,000 or $100,000, depending on what happens. If he gets put into a position where he has to buy a new truck, and have extra drivers to get around, to go out heritage, then things get very expensive. Next. Again, impacts on farming are related to several different issues, including the traffic, including the stress of the cattle, including all of the support services, veterinarians, fertilizer, everything else that comes and goes. Next. More on the cattle and the impact on our family and farming. Okay. Blake will go through this a little more detail, this is a year-round ranching operation, this is not just for fun deal, this is how they make their living. You can't say there's no impact, you just simply can't say it, and there's no way to mitigate some of the access issues we have, life safety issues we have. Next. Drive times, it might be 20 minutes in a car if you're flying, but if you're driving an 18-wheeler up Heritage Lane, it's probably close to an hour, and that's assuming you don't meet another one coming the other way, because contrary to what has been said, yes, maybe the, there's some spots on Clayton Canyon Road that are narrow, that are paved, problem with Heritage Lane is that there are no shoulders, it's simply a one-track gravel road with gumbo base, and essentially it's, you know, you're, you're dealing in ruts that are just wide enough for one rig to get around, and again, contrary to what's being said, they're leaving our property, there's several curves, and there is no site distance. I would challenge a couple of you to, one, if you get at each end, one at our cattle yard on the east side, ordering Steve Anderson's ranch, and one leaving our place, and you take 18-wheelers in there and meet each other head-on, and you tell me how you're gonna get out. Next. More about, you know, specifics about the farming impacts, Blake's operation is, on the wheat side is large, and we run a lot of cows in and out of there. Next. So, the reason we haven't had Heritage Lane wash out since 2006, that's the last time we had an incident. We've had incidents in 1996, we've had incidents in 2004, we had incidents in 2006. We also had an incident, a big incident along with the John Day Dam Bridge and a few things like that in 1964. This, our canyon is flooded from the white painted fence cut out to the county road. You can't, you know, basically you're stuck without access when it's, you know, you're going in with a four-wheel drive and you may not get out. So you just have to realize that that road does wash out, the fact that it hasn't washed out since 2006 is only indicative of the fact that we haven't had an incident. Next. Again, it's not an alternative, you need to go drive it in the middle of winter, you need to think about sending your family, your daughter, home that way, or to meet you that way, it's just not a safe or viable alternative to the mile up from the, from the county. You can't get sales service back in there, if anything happened to your car, nobody's gonna find you for maybe, you know, two weeks, so. Next. That's just to prove, that's where they're gonna put their driveway, off of Clayton Canyon Road, that's where they're gonna tear that up and put their access in. Next. So that's, you know, bottom line, because of all the different issues involved, they don't comply with the farming back standards. Costs are significant, the impacts are significant. So based upon that alone, this should be denied. Next, Sandy? Okay, so these next slides are coming out of our noise letter that was just handed to you, I guess. I will go through it, other than the fact that the conclusion is that what they've done is totally inadequate, they have not tested our canyon, they have not tested at night, and they have not met the requirements that's set forth in Oregon statute for noise, and I, let's do it next, there's about four or five of these. The, the bottom line is, in order to pass muster on the noise issue, they're gonna have to do their noise test. They can't rely on some other test from someone else. Next. So, again, they are dealing with issues that, with nighttime activity, with the wind blowing, with different climatic conditions there. The noise and the dust come up that canyon, the wind brings them up there, I can remember, and this is empirical, but as a kid, when they were using that quarry, the dust would roll up there, the noise at night was significantly louder than anything we ever heard on the freeway. So you just have to realize that this is a very unique situation with all those cliffs, it just drags everything up, noise, dust, everything, and the wind comes right up and rounds. So the basic issue, one of the basic issues that we have is that the 1,500-foot buffer is not adequate, and that's dealt with in Wendy's letter, you have the right to extend that, the real impacts of this go clear to the west end of the peninsula, and actually to everybody at Blaylock when you start messing with our access in and out, because we only have two ways in and out now, and one of them's blocked, that's just not a safe situation. Okay. More on the noise, all this is in the noise letter, so I won't read it. Again, the conclusion, you basically take the minute to read this. ODAT has not met the standard for proving that the noise is not gonna be significant, this is a unique canyon, it's got wind, it's got nighttime, it's got walls that act like a, like a echo chamber. Next. So, take a look at Wildcat Creek, you see a 60-foot setback, this is just typical of what we deal with. They have all their overburden, all their rocks pushed right into the creek. This has been this way forever, this is the way they operate. You know, we've had, like I said, they wouldn't own this property if they hadn't taken this from us when I-84 was built. So, they condemned us back when I-84 and the John Day Dam were being built, and anyway, that's where they got the land. Again, in the creek, they're not, they do not recognize the setbacks, they have never recognized the setbacks. Next. And I have to bring, you know, this broad, little concern, when we put this in front of the planning commission, but we do have a concern here regarding the relationship with Tennyson and the county. We have heard from both ODAT and the contract planner, that there is no contract, direct or indirect, between ODAT and Tennyson Engineering. So, if that's the case, then we have to assume the only way this document got in there is that Gillum County paid for the applicant's work. Now, if I was an individual or a developer coming in with my site plan, and wanted a site plan approval, I can't imagine you doing my work for me.
So. Can I address this right now?
I'd love to, I think that that's the most important thing.
So, this is showing the area proposed for the significant resource overlay, so the area that would be applied in the comprehensive plan map, or in the zoning map, so it's not a site plan, it is mis, I see it's mislabeled on the side there. But there's no, it is, there's no work being done, so the county did pay Tennyson to do this work, to produce a map that would eventually go in your com plan, or, sorry, in your zoning ordinance to show where this site is, and where the zone is. So I'm, there's no, it's just the same way that I drafted a staff report that is for the county to review, and then they choose whether to adopt those findings, they paid for me to do this work, and I'm reviewing, so I think there's no.
To me, that is the applicant's work.
I'm, I'm acting as, as county staff.
If I came in as an applicant, would you be doing my drawings for me? Is this, this is.
If it was a zoning map? Yes.
Hang on a second, hang on, I, this isn't a back and forth, he answered it, and.
Okay, that's fine, that's, we have that concern.
I would, I would like to clarify that, I mean, what, what Nick is saying, what, what happened here is that the commissioners and the judge need to see a map of what's going on here, of what the project entails, and Nick prepared that map, not on ODAT's behalf, on the county's behalf, so that we can see what's going on, and that's that.
Okay.
Yeah, go ahead. So, the last fire, right at the, you know, basically, all around the bit, this was not caused by the bit, this bit hasn't operated. We had fire around us, and I have to admit, we are a little paranoid up on the northwest corner, because we are so isolated, so that's one of our main issues with the fire. Next. Again, the alternate around Heritage Road is not, you know, it really is not a mitigatable situation, situation. Next. Again, we would really like to see this moved to a bigger discussion, a global discussion about gold five resources in Gillum County, so all of these can be treated equally, and all of them can be weighed against each other in a, in a situation where we're not, basically, on a timeline or with our back against the wall. That's the cliff they're gonna take off, and that, most of you know that the big horns base themselves out of Philippi Canyon. Next. So, bottom line, we firmly believe that denial is the right answer on this, there's a lot of reasons why, farming practices, the noise has not been dealt with adequately, we have empirical history that shows that, you know, we know that the dust will roll up that canyon because of the wind, so, and we just respectfully ask the court that you deny this, there's no way to mitigate this. Conditions don't work for us, I mean, they're really, it's just, it's, it's too impactful on our little carnivore. So, with that, if there's any questions, I'll answer them, other than that, I guess that's it.
Okay, thank you, Brian, appreciate it.
Thank you, Alan, Commissioner.
Okay, next, who's next?
I'd like to go after, if that's possible, I'd like to go after Blake.
Okay.
I am Blake Philippi of Philippi Ranches, I'm the president, fifth generation on the same piece of property, and I hope to continue on for many years with the rest of my family, and children, and grandchildren, and everything else. Thank you guys.
Recent new mail, documents, we send it to where? Mail?
Hermiston.
Okay, can you give your address?
79693 Agnew Road, Hermiston, Oregon, 97838.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you guys for all your time, Judge, Commissioner, thank you, for hearing what we have, it is, some of the stuff is significant to us, I mean, we run on tight margins with acreage and wheat and hauling it down, and time is very sensitive that time of the year. They talk about going down the canyon even after they blast, and the road has been open, which, you know, I mean, there's nine months there where, and they could blast as early, you know, like you were saying earlier, like early November, but they won't come in and pave until July or August, they don't wanna do it until they're done, so it might be September, October before they actually repair it, and that's a long time, I guess, for just, and passing this on is for 100 years, I mean, that they can do whatever, you know, so this isn't just one time in five years or 10 years, this is gonna go on for my great, great grandchildren, this is four or five more generations of time, this has a lot of effect, it's not just us today, it's, goes on for a long time. And they talk about afterwards, when they're coming in out of all their trucks, from the pit to the road, I guess you need to drive it sometime, even in your car, you can't meet two cars, right when you come out of the pit, the first thing you come around is a sloped corner that is high and turns to the left, well, you can't see around that, and I know because I've dealt with them hauling in the overburden, the grindings before, and it is a, we have to sit and wait for seven, eight, 10 trucks to come up, because you can't pass two trucks on this road, you cannot, it's, the way it's turned, you're, when you've gotta make that right-hand turn, or left hand going down, right hand coming up, your trailer cuts across, and you either have to drive over the bank, which is 100 feet into the freeway, 150 feet into the freeway, or you cut across, the guy coming up the hill's gotta come through the boulder patch, which are three feet tall, so, we've dealt with them hauling in the grindings before, when they haul the grindings in the bit, and you cannot pass two trucks, so you sit there and wait, and you hope, and you hope, and like, I wonder if it's clear or not, you don't know, because you can't see the bottom or anything from where you, they gotta duck in the bit, and there are just so many trucks, or just one after another, after another, after another, but the time you wait for two, two more caught up, and, you know, so it is a significant waiting period for us, and, and when you're hauling, because that'll be during harvest, and so if we're sitting there hauling wheat, and then you gotta wait to come up, because now they're coming down the hill, same thing, goes both ways, so you're gonna have to wait every trip, you just have to, the way that road is, you cannot see, you cannot navigate two semis through there, you can get two vehicles through there, if you're really paying attention, and the problem is, if you're coming up and you meet us a regular car, most people are afraid of that edge, so they're already gonna be in the middle of the road, so now you gotta take your half out of what's left of, they've already taken half of your lane, so, the road is very narrow, you just drive it if you don't, to see it, you can't see, so it is very, has a lot of impact, and we've dealt with it before, and we know what, what the impacts are, because we've seen it when they had it hauling there before. And then they talk about the cattle, that the cattle are a long ways away, and it has no impact, because they're standing at a trough, and we all know that cattle just stand in the trough all day, but, I mean, they have to go out and eat, they graze, they're grazers. Water is a thing they do once a day, they go to the trough, they come back, our land runs right up to exactly where they're blasting as a line, I mean, they're gonna stand 10 feet from where they're blasting, unless they're gonna run my cows off while they blast, I don't know that, I guess. So they say that they're a long ways away, but the line goes right to where they're blasting, where my cows graze, they graze on that bench, because they're all in there all the time, it's just right across, it's an easy spot, there's a lot of grass, it's out of the wind, it's out of the weather, so when they're caving, it's a great spot for a cow, because on the other side, it's all wind and cold, and on this side, the west winds come around, those bluffs protect the cattle, they stay on those benches a lot, with their cows and calves in the winter when they're gonna be blasting, and they're gonna be grazing right there beside where they blast, so they say they're a long ways off, but it can be as close as five feet from where they're blasting, because if they're gonna take their line right to our line, it's right there, I mean, our cows will stand right there beside them, so it does have a lot of impact on a cow-cab operation, and I'm sure when something is blasting five feet away, it's gonna have impact on a cow. There may not be anything written on it, but we all understand when a loud noise goes off, and, I mean, and if, they're always in and out, it's continuous harassment, and there is studies of different harassment of cattle being, they've done a lot of studies with, I, it's not exact, I mean, it's not saying that it's just like this, but cattle where they're doing studies now are bulls, impacting where they've traveled through, and the cows have, they're always being harassed, we're just, just constantly watching how much more the cows don't have, their breeding comes back, how, and they're talking 20% of their cows won't breed back, just because it continues, continually having to move or doing stuff, you know, it's just harassment, is all it is. You know, they're gonna be in and out of there when they're blasting, they're gonna have to go in and drill every day, they're gonna be going through all that every day, so there's gonna be a continuous harassment, and it is gonna have an effect on the cows and the caving, and their breeding, so when they come back. their breeding, so when they come back, it just will, and they're gonna be right there beside where they're blasting because that's the, one of the best spots because of the wind and the weather, that's a great spot for cattle and cows to be. And then going around Heritage, like they were saying, the amount of time, like a fertilizer truck, because that's when we have to fertilize, we'll be fertilizing through there, and that's a lot of trips, I don't, I have to do the math, I guess, but it's somewhere around forty trips they'll make in and out of there, and the fertilizer company, our stuff comes out of Wasco, they come down the freeway, come up Phillipi Canyon, Quentin Canyon grade, and then they come across, they gotta go all the way around to take a loaded truck of anhydrous, it would take, I bet it would take forty, forty-five minutes to go all the way around from all the way back, one way, now they gotta take that truck all the way down and back, so that's gonna add an hour and a half because you can't just, you gotta go back and forth to do the same thing, you gotta go there and back, so we're talking an hour and a half of just the truck driving around, and these guys are already, you know, they, they wait and they say, all right, you call me when you have an hour and fifteen minutes left of fertilizer, so they can pull in exactly, so they aren't waiting, they don't wanna sit and wait in the field for an hour on me, and then if I'm gonna tell them, well, I'm gonna be ready, but then you gotta take an extra hour and a half a trip, they're probably gonna tell me to find a different source, because they don't have the time to keep, because everybody's going all the time right then, that's a busy time for fertilizing, and I don't, I haven't talked to them, but I just know that the way that we work with them now is, they, they want me to call when I have an hour and fifteen minutes from being empty. And so I call the driver and he says, all right, I'll be there, and he gets there in an hour, but then we're gonna have to guess when I'm gonna be, 'cause he's gonna take an extra forty-five minutes just to get to me, but then they're gonna have an added hour and a half of time, they're not making any money, if just deadhead driving, make the same route that they wouldn't have to make, and I know they're not gonna like it, and I just fear that they would tell me that I can't get my fertilizer from there, so I have to find another location, and there isn't. I'd have to go to Hermiston, and the added cost of that would be, per mileage, would be really expensive to get fertilizer delivered from Hermiston or, I mean, nowhere else. And the road going through Heritage, it is, you know, it's sloped, it, it is twenty feet wide, but in the winter, there's times you can't get through there because the county, Dewey can tell you how many miles of gravel road they have to plow, and that is not the first one they get to, I promise in the county. So, there's gonna be days where you just aren't gonna get in for a little bit, I mean, it might take them a couple of days to get there because they have to hit the main roads, you know, and the more people that are, where they live, they hit the higher density people, and we're not very populated out there, but to us, it is very important to us, but it isn't very populated, so it does take a while to get out there sometimes, and it's a long ways out there to come around that way in the winter, and if it gets foggy, which it does, and it's just rolling hills out in the middle of the field, they can't even do it, the drivers, you know, you gotta wait till you can at least see, and if it's the rolling hills, you can't see, but coming up Phillipi Canyon there, you have the bluff, so you can always know where the road is because you have the rock bluff and the road, so they know, they have a definite line that they can plow out and plow their way up, but coming across Heritage, it just rolls out through wheat fields, and you know how around here, when the winter and when the frost comes in, I mean, there's a lot of roads that you can't even, just, once you get snow on the ground, everything, you have no depth perception, no nothing. And so, there's gonna be times when the weather's perfectly, the perfect bad storm, that they aren't gonna be able to see to come in, so it might be a day or two until it clears up so they can see the roads or get through the drifts, come around, so those are days that we can't get into the cattle, we can't get, and this is, like I said, this is for a hundred years, I mean, I'm, my kids are planning on living out there too, and they're kids, and there's gonna be family, I might not live out there right now, but my kids will, my grandkids might, and this is for a long times, so there's gonna be children out there, and they gotta get to school or whatever, or something happens, or someone's pregnant, you know, there's a lot to look at more than just right now and today, because it is go for so long, but it affects not just mine or my, my kids, it could be their kids or whatever, but it's a lot, a lot longer to look at. They talk about the noxious weeds and they haven't ever cleared up the pit that they used, and it was, if it was my time, I was maybe five, I think, when they did, when they used that pit, and it has been covered in weeds and the dirt has been blowing on it and off of it since they did it, they've never, ever sprayed the weeds, I've never seen a guy on there spraying the weeds or taking care of it or spraying the thistles or anything, they've never done anything since they had their overburden, it's just been a big pile of sand and it grows weeds, that's all it does, they haven't ever, I've never seen anybody spray it, I've never seen where the thistles and the yellow star thistles and anything has ever died on it because they've never ever taken care of it. This part of my deal was, was the, like hauling wheat, and I went through a deal in my letter I wrote, I wrote out, if you, if you add, if even if you do the minimum, or, they say, originally they came out with a paper that said up to twenty minutes, and then they said, no, it won't be that, but even if you go five minutes, and I take a hundred and forty loads to town, and you have to wait, so you take that hundred and forty loads, you gotta go to town and come back from town, so two eighty, two hundred and eighty loads and you wait five minutes for every load, or four minutes, I mean, if you take those many loads, every minute, if you take that many trips, it doesn't take very many minutes to have a significant impact on my farming operation, and we run with a combine, a bankout wagon, and I have two truck drivers, and I have two trucks, and if they're delayed five minutes, then every load, by the end of the day, I'm gonna have to add another semi or do something to add to my harvest operation, I either have to rent one or I have to buy a truck and a trailer just to keep up, so the combine, 'cause when it's harvest time, your combine doesn't wait, if your combine is waiting, you're paying for a really expensive machine to sit there at idle, so your goal as a harvest, to be the farmer, is you want your combine running all the time, it starts, I start cutting wheat at eight o'clock in the morning and we run until nine o'clock at night, and it doesn't quit, it goes around and around and around all day, and we take, if you have to add five minutes to every single load to go to town, it's gonna be a significant expense to us because you either have to buy a semi or rent, and renting semis is very expensive, you're talking ten to fifteen thousand dollars every year just to rent a truck and trailer, and then you gotta pay for a driver, and to add that to us, I think, would be a very big expense to our operation because that's, our living is the wheat and the cattle, and it's all done out there, and if it's all impacted, it does have a big impact on what we do for a living and how we support my family. I'm sure I'm missing things. You guys have some questions?
I think I'm good.
Okay. Thank you, guys.
Okay. Thank you, Blake. Were you ready next, Lori?
I'm ready.
I do have something pending. This came with my, I intended to hand my letter out to you, so this is a better look. Of the applicant. I have read all the documents.
Can you state your name and address?
Lori Bartman, other than the look, in North Gillum County. My address is wine lady one at gmail dot com. We do still have grapes, and we haven't decided what to do with them yet, I'll let the winery dispose, so we'll get that out of the way. I do have a statement prepared, however, I have some responses to what the proponents are, are saying here. As I said in my letter, they've already condemned the land and taken it away from the family. So this condemnation, this is condemnation, they're gonna take this gravel and they're gonna step it for someone else. I have a problem with that. That's our land, it's been in the family with Albert Phillipi getting there in eighteen eighty-eight. That has been our land since then. It was taken away by O'Dowd when the dam, when the dam was built and the current freeway was built. Bureau of Land Management, Corps of Engineers, they've taken miles of land of the John Day River, so my question would be, when is enough? We've given a lot, and we don't wanna give anymore. This isn't, this project doesn't do anything with Gillum County residents unless we get some of the grindings for some of the Gillum County road. Doesn't provide any jobs, there's no income for Gillum County residents, all it does is take income away from us, income away from Gillum County residents. They also talk about information they Googled, they tried to research, they're city voters. They know a little bit here, they're city voters. They don't know, they don't know our land, they don't know our cows, they don't know our operations, they don't know where the springs are, any of that. They say we have a spring on our land, and I'd like to know where it's at, 'cause I haven't seen it. So, you can Google all you want, but until you've lived there, until you've worked there, until you've raised your children there, raised your cows there to make a living for your family, you don't know. I hear a lot of, I think, pretty sure, when you've calved cows out in the wintertime, you know what's gonna give them grief. Blake's done it for how many years now? And his father, and his father, Bud, Albert, the list goes on, they've all done it, they know. So, I have a little problem with, I think, I'm pretty sure. A little, a little information about Heritage, it does wash out. Blake is right, there's a lot of times, it is impossible, Dewey can't get to us, he can't be everywhere at once. There's lots of snowdrifts. If you don't have a four-wheel drive pickup to drive, you're not gonna get through there, just flat-armed, and especially during the fall. I have driven through there where you have to follow the wheat roads to get home. I've lost the road going up, or going up to the bluff because you can't see the road. The sky, the ground, it's snowing, you can't see where you're going. So if you have to have a, if you have to be out there for any emergency, I don't. I don't advertise very much that I'm the only one out there most of, not since most of the time, but on a daily basis, Blake's, Blake's out there when he needs to be, which is pretty often, but a lot of times I'm there with myself. If I ever have an accident, how long is it gonna take to get to? I can't say I'm gonna have a heart attack next Tuesday at one o'clock, please be there. So, saying that you're going to give all this information to the ambulances and the fire people and everything, oh, that's great, that's all the way on good until it comes a time when there's a problem. And that could be, same with the weather. Ninety-six, I remember that, there was water coming from the, from the Phillipi Gate, or the Meese Gate, all the way to the county road, and it was, it wasn't a trickle of water, it was a rushing river you didn't dare walk past. It happens, it's not, it might not happen every year, but it happens, we can't determine They say they're gonna fix the road right after they blow it up and push a bunch of rock onto it, and that's gonna, that to me wonders what kind of integrity of road we're gonna have, and to me, and the planning commission that they were talking about, could be up to five months before a road is repaired. That's a long time to be, to have to traverse the road in a pickup. Larry drives a little Echo to work every day, and I drive a little Elman, wherever I need to go. So, if it's a, if that detour is eight minutes eastbound, I'd like to know who the hell drove it, 'cause it's gonna be a whole lot longer than eight minutes. So, in the wintertime, when Larry's driving to work and he's driving his little Echo and he could just zoom on down Phillipi Canyon, and he has to go all, all the way around Heritage, it's gonna be a lot longer than eight minutes, if, if he can get through there. And I just wanna make a small comment about Tennessee. Don't stop me. There is an appearance, there is a conflict of interest. When I read the staff reports, I see encouragement that this project is viable, it is not viable. No one has come talk to us, there isn't anything in any of this that talks about agriculture. So there comes the conflict of interest, it's not just facts, and that's where we feel that there is a conflict. Don't be that. I, I wanna say a little bit more about the land that O'Dowd has. It was with Phillipi, and they took it away, and now they've done it again, they've taken. How are we gonna reverse that? It's taken, it's gonna cost, it's gonna take more lawyers and more money. So they talk about how it's not gonna affect the farmers, their income, their bottom line, already has, already has. They said two thousand two, two thousand eight, ah, I think there was another one in there, three that I know of. They continue to harass us over this land, how many times and how much money has to be spent before they leave us alone? They have other sites that they can use, and then they want it fifty to a hundred years. No, no, please put us off of this. I would like to reiterate, this is a non, this is not a long-term project, it's not a dam, it's not a road, a big road, this is maintenance, maintenance. They're gonna destroy the Missoula householdings, take away land that's been in this family since eighteen eighty-eight for maintenance, seems a little over the top. We're trying to make a living on this land, on this land that we love, or we wouldn't be there. Farming practices will be interrupted, there's no two ways about it. You can't put, you can't put, oh, what's that saying? You can't put perfume on a pit, it's still steam. The family has been stewards, stood stewards of this land. We can protect it from fires, poachers, and raise good crops. I've never seen one of these guys out to help us fight the fires, when we have a firebug starting on Blaylock and Phillipi. So I ask, I ask you to deny the proposal and stop this harassment, and let us, and let us have, let us be, let us make our living on the land we live on, instead of ruining the Missoula outcropings, they're historic, why would you wanna destroy them for maintenance? So again, please look out for the Gillum County residents, you're Gillum County residents. Mrs. Algro.
Thank you, Lori. Questions?
Any questions? Any questions?
Thank you.
Mr. Schaefer, if may I, I'd like to clarify, yes, earlier, I, if it seems like I stopped Mr. Meese from testifying regarding the conflict of interest, that was not my intent. My intent was to stop the back and forth between him and Mr. Kramer. And if there's anything in addition that you would like to say about that, Mr. Meese, I think it would be appropriate to hear that part of you. I did not intend to stop your testimony in any way, only to stop the back and forth.
I think we understood the point.
My name is Meese again, trustee, Meese Family Trust. We just, we just feel left out, like I said to start with. Gold One, Oregon Land Use Loans and Privates, citizen involvement from the beginning. Not at the point where they come and say, here's the proposal, comment on it, because that's what's got us into this, you know, Blake Meyer into this. We tell you how many thousands of dollars in attorney's fees. If we had had an overarching discussion, and we had, had really been involved and had a discussion of outflow of resources, it would have been significant. We feel that the, the direction, especially like on your own plans where, you know, when you're being told to ignore the references to the basalt cliffs, some of those directives don't register, and that's why we're having trouble with this conflict situation. It's just like ODOT and Tennyson are too close. And I know that he's supposed to be working with you guys, and Nick said, we had a very own conversation, and that's why I'm doing this, but we just, we feel that there's someplace in there, it's just, it's just been taken through. It was never suggested that this be denied until we came up. That was never an option until we showed up here. It was never put out in an open, neutral, third-party way. It was between the county and ODOT, and it's been, you know, they were directed to send recommendation of denial to the court. What you got was a recommendation to approve with conditions. So, we also have concern, and that's why we volunteered to write the denial findings for you, because Nick said in his comments that he's had, he has problems thinking about how we're going to write the denial, and that's in the staff, in one of the staff reports that it was brought up. So we just, it's like this thing has just rolled on over the top. And it's like, ODOT and Tennyson are too close, I don't get it, and that's why we have concerns. And we also like, want to back up here, I'd like to, assuming that ODOT will comment after we're done.
They do.
So I would like to, knowing that we won't have a rebuttal after their rebuttal, I would like to ask for the seven-day continuance, so that if we have any response to that, that we can respond to that.
I think that's required, isn't it? Seven days?
Somebody has asked for it, okay?
All right, it's asked for.
And you have to vote to grant it. The, they have to show that there's been new evidence submitted in favor of the application. Or you alone can ask for a continuance to review the materials. Again, we're pushing against the 180-day deadline. Remind me, I would probably want to recess and talk that through.
Right.
I don't know what that means.
Yeah, the point I'm trying to make is Mr. Meese is asking for the seven days, so it is now in the record that there is a request for that, that will be something we have to react to. All right, good, okay.
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you, Commissioner.
So, I've got two, I've got David Connie left, separately or together?
I'll be speaking on behalf of both.
Okay.
I know in the instructions it said not to be redundant, but it's very difficult to be other than. Connie Anderson, 14906, Heritage Lane, Arlington. We, David Anderson and Connie Anderson, oppose the proposal for the ODOT Fife Canyon Prairie project. Permitting this project has too many negative and irreparable damaging effects. The site lies in the middle of the IA4 Big Horn sheep habitat. If the project is allowed, they would lose several canyons and key water sources, causing undue stress and overuse to the ground that would remain available for them. Negative impacts to herd health can be expected. Blasting the rock outcroppings left by the historic Missoula floods cannot be reclaimed. Once gone, they're gone. It's our duty to protect such historic evidence. It's also been identified that in the Code Five, it does provide for protection of those basalt areas. Although we've been led to believe that in no way can those outcroppings be considered for denial, the way I read it is contrary to that. If this destruction was proposed by private property owner, litigation by state to special interest groups would be implicit. To permit this project condones the takings of private property through condemnation. This not only deprives landowner, your constituents and neighbors, but removes more land from county tax base. The Quentin Canyon Road infrastructure will be adversely affected for an untold amount of time. It is said that complete road closure will not occur during wheat harvest. However, that is not the only time the farmers and ranchers in the area depend upon that road. Agriculture is cycling. Once harvest is done, you get into seeding. Once seeding is done, then it's time to bring the cattle in. Once that happens, then there's, then it's calving, and feeding, and if necessary, take water. When it's spring, it starts over again, with more seeding, fertilizing, it's an endless cycle. With agriculture being cycling, there is no good or better time for disruption. Farmers and ranchers, as some of you well know, operate on a very thin profit margin. And what is expected of the farmers and ranchers out there to absorb financially, I think, I really think is, is highly unfair. Heritage Lane is not designed for, nor will it stand increased traffic load. ODOT opposes the complete closure of Quentin Road during the winter months, at a time when gravel roads are most fragile. And again, it's been said before, but Heritage Lane is often impassable. Quite often, my house is the last one that, where it's passable. And I have an option that it doesn't add too many more miles for me to go ahead and go Blaylock. That's a, that's something I can financially absorb. However, to ask these other people to do so is again, highly unfair. And given the eight-minute added time, if anybody drives past my house trying to make it within that eight minutes, I'm going to be extremely unhappy. That's going way too fast. Therefore, Heritage Lane is not a viable option. And lastly, this project is completely unnecessary. There are privately owned rock quarries in close proximity to IA4 that have supplied aggregate for past ODOT projects, and will have ample supply for any future projects. Money's from the private sales of aggregate back into the local economy. A win-win for everybody. The same is not true if, if the state is allowed to undercut the private quarry owners. And it seems to me that it goes without saying that perhaps preferential treatment would be given to those contractors who agree to utilize ODOT's quarry. In ODOT's proposal, they have stated that they will give pavement grindings to Gillum County. It has been in past practice that grindings from IA4 have been given to the county for repurposing. They are by saving state or even the expense of disposing of those vast amounts of hazardous materials. And that's a practice that we shouldn't expect to change. Therefore, there's ample aggregate in the privately owned quarries to supply the demand. And in past practice, that has, the grindings have gone for repurposing. And we shouldn't expect any change. So there's nothing to be gained from that quarry going into Philippi. Only loss to the residents and the people of North Gillum County. I know we're not very many in number, but that, that shouldn't weigh in on the disruption. If it disrupts two versus 200, I still think there's the same amount of consideration that should be given. ODOT has applied for and been denied by previous county courts this application. We ask that the county court, current county court, continue with the wisdom of previous boards and deny their application, and put a stop to the endless re-application. It seems to be nonstop, and it just needs to stop for us people in that end of the county. Thank you.
Thank you, Connie. Okay. So Connie spoke at behalf of both Dave and, well, Kurt and Dave. So, this time I don't have anybody left on the list. Doesn't appear anybody who wants, who is neutral that has signed up, so.
I have an agency comment that was submitted.
Okay.
So this is a letter that was submitted by Amanda Ponton at Department of Land Conservation and Development this morning that addresses concerns about impacts on the agricultural practices.
Sandy, did you have another copy of that?
Make sure I keep one for your official record.
So, how do you propose, there's quite a bit of information here, there's been an awful lot that's been introduced to us. I'm assuming that with Mr. Meese, are you fairly comfortable with the, with the testimony that you've given that covers virtually all that's in the letters that we received last night? Or yesterday afternoon?
One other issue that I want to clarify, and I may have. It's Brian Meese, trustee, Meese Family Trust. One thing I didn't address was the water, the springs. Every large source we have in that canyon is a spring. There is a very thin, immeasurable layer, so the water runs out. The one that ODOT shows on the map is right on the canyon, we actually don't use anymore. The one that wildlife and the livestock use is right against their tailing pile down in the canyon. Our house is on a spring, same thing. It's, the water runs out on an impervious layer. If that shakes and breaks in the back, then we don't get the water up front. So, it's a very, it's a very fragile water system, it's all springs, it all leaks out of the hillsides, and we have no wells, and two of the major springs that we use and our livestock use are not on ODOT's map. So, just to be aware that their information on the water system in our canyon has still been wrong.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, and again.
Thank you, Your Honor. Okay. Our next step in this is the applicant rebuttal. I'm looking for maybe a 10-minute break here for us to, you know, regroup just a little bit, so. I'm not going to say regroup, but allow me to get some water and some rest. So, this time we're going to recess for 10 minutes. We'll be back at, o'clock says 4:35. Okay, I think we'll, go ahead, we're a little bit late, I'm sorry, a part of it was me trying to get ahold of my wife, so. With that, we shall come out of recess, go back into regular session. The next order that we have on the procedures here is applicant rebuttal. Stacy and Russell and Robert, no, Stacy, okay? Okay, okay. You're on.
Okay, so I'm actually Bob Towns, when I say Robert.
Well, I always call to Bob, you know, you announced Robert, so I thought, okay, maybe he has changed. Okay.
So, a couple things here, well, you know, listening to everybody, a lot of, a lot of the information is the same information, you know, that's been presented in letters. We really didn't provide a lot of new information today in our presentation, other than clarifying things. And our goal is not to be adversarial in this process, right? I mean, we want to work through some of these mitigation items the best we can. I wanted to just address a couple of them before we moved on. You know, a lot has been mentioned about the condemnation, or condemnation of easement. That's outside of these hearings, right? I'm not going to comment on that, that's a legal proceeding, right? We have other avenues that we pursue on that separate from this. So that's why ODOT will not be responding to any questions regarding that. As far as the other things, as I mentioned in our intro today, a lot of the, you know, the concerns that we've heard, whether in letters or here today, again, are not Code Five related, right? And we're still willing to mitigate some of those in our responses, even though they're not required by the code. And you know, you look at a couple of them, like the Big Horn sheep, some of these other mentions. We have ODFNW reviewed our site plan, they had no comment. You know, we do all of these things outside, even though the Big Horn sheep aren't listed as a significant resource in your planning documents, nor are the cliffs specifically to that site as required. And so, you know, as we try to do as much as we can within our development plan to make sure we keep the same benching when we're done, so that it can look natural, that is not a requirement as well, even though that's something we're willing to mitigate. As far as a couple of the other issues, I, you know, we seem to be talking about this road issue a lot. ODOT is fine with clarifying that under a condition and saying, after the 21-day opening, we'll meet with the county road master that day and make a determination on the repairs to make it better, or as, the same condition or better, we can add that, that stipulation. I don't want to keep going back on the five-months thing, that's not the reality, right? It's, we're fine with stipulating to meet with the Gillum County road master on a day of opening and have it like new, right? That's fine, that's not an issue that we want to keep confusion around. As far as the egg issues that continue to be brought up, you know, or the fire, that's why the main closure, you know, is November to March. You know, as a fellow rancher, myself actually, and, you know, about fertilization time, you know, if we're looking at that goes on till November 15th maybe, and that's a concern, we'd be happy to stipulate November 15th to March 30th, right? Those are, you know, that's not a significant change for us, we'd be willing to, to work on that date just to eliminate that further discussion. As far as the other things, I think, instead of just getting into a legal discussion back and forth about, well, your code says this, you have our documentation. I know it's a lot of information, although time is of the essence for us as related to this project, we'd be willing to allow for the seven-day delay to, to allow you to work through it and look at it. I don't really want to provide any additional information at this time, I think we've provided enough. We don't need to confuse the issue anymore. We really just want to, you know, have an opportunity to work together, mitigate the things that we think we can control, so that we can find some balance, and that would really be our goal here. So, we'd be happy to accept the seven-day additional time.
Again, Stacy Potts gave further records, so, because I'm new to your process, I was trying to understand what the seven days actually would be. So if we could set some sort of parameters around that, because I think it's seven days to allow for a response to new information that we might have provided in our testimony. And then we, the applicant, have an opportunity to respond the next seven days. And then, as I understand, I think you have to meet, you have to have another public meeting to consider all of that and make a decision. So, I, I am... So I, of mine, I don't think that any new information was introduced, but also I want to make sure that the court has an opportunity to consider all the information before you even to be able to allow Nick to write, find things that support that. So if we could, I think what I'm trying to say is that ODOT is agreeable to seven days, and maybe we can work through a calendar and try and figure that out in hearings and I guess coming up with 14 days for comments.
Would it be 14 days?
Let's have it.
Seven plus seven. Seven, and this is, this is all because our, your Gillon County Code does not.
Address that.
Address this.
Right.
So I'm taking this from another county in Oregon that addresses this. You could allow the record to be kept open for seven days following the hearing to submit new written evidence. Any participant may file a written request to respond to the new evidence submitted during that, that period. If so requested, the county court shall reopen the record to any person except, to accept the second round of written testimony. Then close the record to everyone except the applicant.
That follows some of the state statutes, which is that if the hearing authority writes a continuance, it shall be continued for seven days. An opportunity shall be provided after continued hearing for persons to present and rebut new evidence. So that would be the new evidence presented here. And then, or if something's submitted, and if new written evidence is submitted, then there's an additional seven days for the purpose of responding to the new evidence that's submitted. So we are looking at a 14-day window by state statute, which I think would control where our code is cited.
And the goal here is to get written evidence between the two proponents and opponents, done no more evidence submitted on the day of a hearing, no more oral testimony at the next hearing, unless you want to hear further oral testimony.
That would really be ideal, just to give the judge and commissioners time to absorb all this and really be able to deliberate in a meaningful way.
I have a question, what was their deadline? I mean, there hadn't been a deadline.
Actually.
August 1st was the deadline to get written comments in, that would be, would be submitted with your package. So, and then this is a de novo hearing, so they did have the right to bring, anyone has the right to bring comments to this hearing right before oral. And that's why we got them today. So the goal of this, though, I just want to be clear here, because it's still a little confusing to me. So the record be open for seven days for written testimony to be submitted, then additional seven days for ODOT to respond to that testimony?
Yes.
And not enter new evidence at that point, only responding to that written testimony during that.
And the, the seven-day window, the written response to, would, is the same, it's the same qualification though? On anything that the opponents was correct, they would only be submitting additional testimony in response to any new testimony that we provided today?
Can you say that again?
Yeah, so it's, what is it exactly that they would be submitting in the next seven days? My understanding is that it would be, they would be responding to whatever it was that we said today. Not necessarily what was in the Augustus letters, or whatever was said today, which is reiterated, but I think that we already submitted. I think what I'm trying to avoid is another 40-page letter of a whole bunch of new stuff, that we would then only have an opportunity to respond to in writing, and then not have an opportunity to respond to orally. And then it could just go on forever, it's also the other problem. I just wanted to, I wanted to close the issue.
Well, if you, responding orally is something different, so another option is to keep the record open for seven days. Now, we're just going to keep giving continuance requests.
Why, you know, I'm going to step in here. I've received two from Kellington Law Group. This is the, this is the first one. The second one, you know, I was going to, and to be perfectly honest with you, I think it's saying basically the same thing, it just sort of reiterates an off-line that was already there. So I guess there comes a point in time where there's already a lot of information here that I have had, I have not, I mean, I'm, again, getting very little sleep going through a lot of this. I'm not sure if we need to get any additional information. I, you know. I, I'm not sure what else could come. One of the things that I would like to know about, which I am kind of unfamiliar with, is, is the fact that I think one of the testimonies here said that this had been in front of the county court on other occasions. I don't remember it coming in front of the county court. I remember it being in front of the planning commission at one time, and ODOT withdrew the request at the time. But I don't remember it coming in front of the county court.
That's my understanding.
So.
It was conditionally used permanent came before county court.
I think, yeah, somebody mentioned that was 2009. Okay. And then there was another one, 2002, which I'm not familiar with. You know, I, commissioners, I'm just not, I don't, I feel uncomfortable in saying that. I'm not sure I can make a decision today based on the information that I have now. Ruben, do we have time to go over, just no additional information? Just the opportunity to at least get through the information that's been brought to us? Or does this really need to be settled today?
Well, our, our hearing procedures say that any party can request a continuance.
Okay.
If new information was brought.
And we have to grant.
And we have to grant.
And we already did that.
You didn't, you haven't made that determination.
Okay.
You just accepted the request.
Okay.
That's right.
So, and it's a tough call on whether, whether it was just clarifying information today.
Okay. You know, you know, I think we're getting off just a little bit. They still have rebuttal, we're still trying to clarify the seven-day thing, is there?
I think what we wanted to address was.
You're saying that it's.
We don't have any new additional information provided on this. But if the record was allowed to remain open, and the opponents provided something, then obviously we want the opportunity to respond to it. But as of what was presented today, you know, we presented our information before, whether in letters, and we clarified things today. We just, we just don't have any new additional information to provide. We don't think it would benefit the discussion.
Okay.
All right. So the way I'm reading it is we have to grant the seven-day continuance, leave the written record open. We then have, we could go with this, you file a written request to respond to the record?
Can we take a step back?
Yes.
And I'm sorry, and I'm a little lost to try and figure this out.
You have to be me.
So to be clear, what ODOT wants is to be able to give the court an opportunity to think about all of this information. And to allow it, and I, and I think making a snap decision today, and maybe having this snap might be difficult. I would want to be in your position, I'll be perfectly honest. So I also am aware that the opponent has asked for an additional seven days. But that was also based on their assumption, not their assumption, but they, their assertion, that there has been new evidence provided by ODOT. I disagree with that, and I can tell you that that PowerPoint was made from looking at all of the past letters that were submitted. However, should the court determine that there was new evidence, and it grants the seven-day period, ODOT is not going to object to that and just wants to work within the timelines and ask that whatever additional responses that opponents provide be limited to whatever that new evidence is that they assert happened earlier.
Okay. New evidence that they feel that ODOT has provided to you?
Our code, I don't, does our code limit that yet, or?
It doesn't. I don't believe it does. It says it shall be granted. Unless, unless there is a continuance, if the participants so request before the conclusion of the initial evidentiary hearing, the record shall be, remain open for at least seven days after the hearing.
Does that sentence, does it start with end of year, is that what it is?
No.
So I don't think it's based on the determination of new evidence, I think we're stuck with the continuance because it was requested.
And that goes along with the statute.
Okay. So at this time, I, you know.
So here's what we do, we have the continued hearing at least seven days from today's date. An opportunity is provided at the continued hearing for persons to present in or about new evidence, arguments, or testimony. If new written evidence is submitted at the continued hearing, any person may request prior to the conclusion of the continued hearing that the record let be left open for at least seven days to submit additional written evidence, arguments, or testimony for the purpose of responding to the new written evidence. So I think we're looking at a 14-day window, but we're getting to submit evidence and responses to it. And then the applicant, though. The local government, unless weighed by the applicant, the local government shall allow the applicant at least seven days after the record is closed to all other parties to submit final written arguments in support of the application. So there is a point where if you close it, ODOT still gets the final rebuttal. But that final rebuttal shall not include any new evidence. That has to be based solely on what's been submitted up to that point. So that's where the limitation comes in, is at that point.
Okay, so what we can do right now is we can say seven days from now, which is the 22nd of August, 5:00 PM will be the deadline for any new information to come to this board. That will leave, so we.
We're getting a little ahead.
Okay, all right. Sorry. Okay.
Well, I think you're just clarifying.
I just clarified the dates.
And I think you clarified the dates too, so.
I just, yeah. So we'd be looking at the 22nd and the 29th. The 22nd being the seven-day period for information to come in. Nothing after that, let's say, I'm going to say 5:00 PM on the 22nd, and then on, if we get to hold, hold a meeting on the 29th. The meeting a week later?
We don't have to do, we don't have to do anything on the 22nd, right? We just, our next meeting is the 29th.
Yeah, for us, it's a matter of letting everybody know, the 22nd is the deadline.
Yeah. The, the part I'm worried about is then, if you have your hearing on the last day that they can submit written, you're going to get a written testimony on the last day.
I see. I see.
So.
So.
By the way, the hearing, though, would be, if the hearing was on the 29th, the only one that would be submitting any more testimony would just be any kind of rebuttal to the, any additional testimony here in the first seven days, right?
Yes.
So they could give it to us the day before.
Yeah.
So the other thing we can do is, is do what we did today. I cannot, on the 5th of September, I have to be out of here till August.
I've gotten that week.
Yeah. It's, it's ODOT's timeframe to work on. Whatever new information we have.
And also that there wouldn't be as long a hearing as we had today, because there'd be no additional testimony that day. It'd just be a decision-making process.
Yeah, the decision-making process, I want to make sure that we go through these individually, and as to yay and nay on each and every one that we have as far as.
So, not there, reject here, but so, you know, timing isn't the essence for us to have a decision, right? Whether we have to appeal a decision that's not in our favor, or whether we get approval so we can proceed with this current project. But in the essence of time, if I'm understanding you correctly, you provide seven days for anyone to reply. We will not reply in that first seven days, right? If the opponent applies, we would get a copy of that after seven days, and then we turn around the written response prior to your hearing.
Correct.
And so that hearing date can be a little bit flexible on our end for schedule. I mean, it can't be that flexible, but if, you know, with seven days and seven days, we don't want to provide it the morning of, or even the day before, if it, depending on what the opponent, what we have to respond to. So if we need to push it out another week or something, I'd, I'd be happy to talk schedules. Our schedule is we'd like a determination by basically, you know, the 10th or 12th of September is our decision point on the project, whether we delay the project until we have finality here, or we make a determination another day. So we can be a little bit flexible, as long as we know we're getting a final decision by one of those dates. Otherwise, we wouldn't want to be, we wouldn't start the clock sooner.
Yeah, I guess, you know, you had made, excuse me, you had made the comment that if it's denied, you'll appeal it. I'm pretty sure that if it's approved, it will be appealed also, so.
That was my bigger concern.
Yeah, yeah. So, yeah. I wanted to make sure we got that clear, but I think there's going to be another step of this. Stacy, you had meant, you know, normally I don't use first names, but you had stated that in the very beginning. I think your timeframe fits into, I'm glad these board of appeals, I think, would probably streamline this a little more.
And yes, thank you. My concern actually was if we're favorable of being your appellate appeal. Because the timeline that I, even though it's still on a fast track, there's still an opportunity for intervenors, I assume. Well, we would be in that case, so we still have that opportunity. It drives out more than we can.
Okay, all right. It's all new to me, so.
And in further complicated, I'm out of the state September 5th, that week of September 5th.
Okay.
That. So if we did seven days of open for written testimony, had the hearing, and then seven days to the 29th, and ODOT can respond early in that week? Or do you prefer to, so what I'm getting to is it can either be the 29th or the 10th for the next hearing?
Yeah.
But, so the 10th would give you more, a longer time. However, it's going to be a preliminary decision at that hearing, and it'll direct staff to adopt findings. So it'll be another week at least before it's fully decided.
I don't know what new information could be out there. I mean, we've, we've made pretty good arguments on ourselves. Instead of delaying, let's just shoot for the 29th, and we'll, that's a Wednesday, and we'll have a letter to you by Monday, the 27th.
And quite frankly, all that letter might say is everything, look back at everything you said.
Okay. So, okay, that's, anything else as far as rebuttal? I mean, okay, yeah, I feel, okay. Okay. Okay, so, with there being nothing further, I'm going to go ahead and close the public portion, public hearing here. There is a portion of deliberation
And it continue?
To continue to the 29th of September, or, excuse me, August. Sorry. I'm looking at my calendar, and it's like, that may be the only days I may
And the written record is open?
The written record is open until, for seven days, August 22nd at 5:00 p.m. We will take nothing after that time. Sandy, as soon as we do receive everything, we'll make sure that this gets sent off to ODOT, the proper people that are, it's Russell, Stacy, Bob.
We have to pick a time now, too.
So, we pick a time on the 29th, so Wednesday. You know, afternoon works pretty good for me.
I don't need it on a, at five.
Okay. So, let's go 1:00 o'clock on the 29th. Does that work specifically?
It does. I just have one question. You will not, you will not be taking any additional testimony on the 29th, correct?
No, no. Actually, at that time, we'll probably deliberate on the information that we have, that the staff puts together. So, we'll go through each one of the concerns that have been brought to, you know, forward and give a yay or nay on each one of them for some discussion we'll discuss.
And your proceedings are recorded, they're not just minutes, they're recorded, correct?
Correct, yes.
Sorry, I'm anticipating not being here if it's
Yeah.
I live four and a half hours away.
I currently have a conflict on Wednesday at 2:00, the 29th, so could it be one of you? I'm sorry, I have lots of hearings, everything.
Are you meeting in Arlington or on, on the 29th?
If I could, if you, Arlington happens to work, that would be great because we could actually listen in. I, it's my understanding that's not, that that's a possibility in Arlington, but not necessarily here.
Okay. Not sure if that's the case or not. Yeah, I don't, yeah, as far as listening in, you would have been better off here than Arlington. I'm not sure of the ability to do that in Arlington. Commissioners?
Morning.
I, morning, I, you know, I do have a conflict on that day. I'll do, I, it's one of those that I'm sure I can make some adjustments. So, anytime with that particular Wednesday.
I'm making my mapping, see how far The immatolus, two hours. Be immatolus by two, so it can be done by noon.
Okay, so, how about if we, we do a 9:00, 9:00 a.m. start on the 29th? Here, with a, a goal to be finished between 11:30 and 12:00. So, officially, this particular meeting is in a continuance until the 29th of August at 9:00 a.m. Okay. So, there's really nothing until that time. Do you have, okay, so with that being said, I guess we shall adjourn until 29.